So yes, we are ready.
Great, thank you so much. Okay, we will now begin the City of West Sacramento meeting of West Sacramento City Council and West Sacramento Redevelopment Successor Agency and West Sacramento Financing Authority, January 20th meeting. And tonight, for the Pledge of Allegiance, it will be led by Jasmine with the Andrade family. So we'll start off with the Pledge of Allegiance. Jasmine, are you on? Oh, yes, she is. Are you able to speak, Jasmine? We can't hear you. Madam Clerk, is she muted?
Okay, unmuted.
Okay, great.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the nation for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with justice and liberty for all.
Thank you so much, Jasmine. Thank you to the Andrade family for joining us tonight. Okay, and pursuant to the Governor's Executive Order N-2920, members of the West Sacramento City Council and staff will participate in this meeting via Zoom to reduce the spread of COVID. Members of the public are asked to watch the meeting via live stream on the city's website or wave cable. The Governor's Executive Order provided guidance for meetings, which allowed various ways to receive public comments, including electronically. And this pandemic has lasted for months longer than we anticipated when we first decided to meet remotely. Tonight, I'm proud to announce that we will begin live public comment. So I ask for your patience as we embark on this new process. We look forward to hearing from all of you. So we will continue to receive written comments, which we have received tonight, and we received them via email, all the comments that were handed to us before 4:30 PM. And we'll continue to receive additional written comments as the meeting continues. The Clerk will do our best to try to keep track of all of that. And tonight, to make verbal comments during the meeting, you can join the meeting using the Zoom meeting link, hyperlinked, or the phone number listed on the city's website on the city council's agenda. I will request public comment during Item 1A prior to the first item on consent and after staff presentation for any other item on the agenda. So once I have announced that the public comment period, if you would like to make a comment, please do one of the following. If you are joining the meeting via Zoom, press the raise hand button. It is located in one of the, in the three dots on the side. Just click on that and you'll see saying raise hand button. If you are joining the meeting by phone, please press star nine. And when it is your turn to comment, the Clerk will call you by name or phone number, and staff will unmute your microphone. Depending on the number of people wishing to participate on a specific item, I will decide how much time to give for each person to speak. So once again, your public comment has, once your public comment has ended, you will be muted. So in addition to this process, I would like to remind council members the council procedures for conducting council meetings. At times, I anticipate we will have disagreements over a particular matter. And although I appreciate diverse perspectives, it is beneficial for council to know the procedures to ensure we can maintain a sense of decorum for the public to follow our council meetings. The mayor is the presiding officer and acts as chair at council meetings. And in the absence or incapacity of the mayor, the pro temp serves as presiding officer. At our next meeting, we will be selecting a vice mayor. To assist the city council in the development of a structure for orderly discussion of items, rules have been prepared, which present, represent accepted practices for the management of council meetings. The mayor will reference the item being presented. The city staff will present the background of the item. And then we will turn to council for discussion and then open it up to for public comments, and we will close the public comment or return to council for the discussion. And then I will ask for a motion if it's required for that particular item. During council discussion, a member of the city council or staff shall first address the mayor and gain recognition by raising their hand or using the hand raised button. Comments and questions should be limited to the issue before the council. And cross exchange between council and members and the public should be avoided. On questions to staff, a council member shall, after recognition by the mayor, adjust questions to the department head or designated staff member. And regarding interruptions, once recognized, the council member is considered to have the floor. And another council member will not interrupt the speaker, except to make a point of order or a point of personal privilege. In such circumstances, the council member holding the floor shall cease speaking until the point of order or privilege is resolved. Upon being recognized by the mayor, members of the staff shall hold the floor until completion of their remarks or until recognition is withdrawn by the mayor. A council member shall not speak more than once in a particular subject until every other council member has had the opportunity to speak. Council members are encouraged to discuss items during the decision-making process and may ask staff to respond when appropriate. Other guidelines have also been adopted to ensure meetings of the council emphasize the importance of the business being conducted in a professional manner. Council members and staff shall work to preserve appropriate order and decorum during all meetings. Discourage side conversations, disruptions, interruptions, or delaying efforts. Limit disruptive behaviors, such as demonstrating rude, boisterous, or profane behavior, will be called to order by the mayor. If such conduct continues, the mayor may mute the disruptive person, call the recess, request the removal of the individual from the meeting room, or adjourn the meeting, or take out such appropriate action as permitted by the Brown Act. Council discourages applause, bullying, or other similar behaviors during the public meetings. So the next item on the agenda, well, first I'd like to report out on what happened in our closed session. I think that's our next item on the agenda. We had a conference with legal counsel regarding GC 54956.9, and there was no action taken on both actions on the agenda. And we also had a conference with the labor negotiator for the West Sacramento Police Officers Association, West Sacramento Police Managers, and no action was taken. And the next item on the agenda is Item 1A, which are presentations by the public on matters not included on the agenda. And council members are prohibited from discussing these items. Madam Clerk, do we have anything in writing or live public comment request?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, members of the public. Mayor, I see three hands. We don't have written public comments for 1A, but I see two raised hands. Do you want me to call them for 1A?
Please do.
Teresa? Ms. Teresa? Rivera?
I think that's Teresa Rivera.
Yes, this is she.
Go ahead. You want to comment on 1A, please?
No, I didn't have a comment. I just wanted to congratulate the mayor for positive. That was it.
Thank you.
Let's call on Desiree Rojas.
Hi, I'm a little, I'm a little confused here. I have the agenda in front of me. Can you tell me what item we're on?
For 1A, for items not on the public, not on the agenda.
What, what is 1A, though?
1A is for items not on the agenda. We will allow three minutes to speak for items not, for items that are not on the agenda. So this is just general public comment.
Okay, well, I'd like to make a comment. My name's Desiree Rojas. I'm the president and labor counsel for Latin American Advancement, AFL-CIO, and Change to Win. I'd like to invite everyone in the community to join the 20th Annual Cesar Chavez Workers Caravana in honor of Dean Murakami, our comrade who recently passed away. This is going to happen on March 27th. It will be a caravana, though we'll have a flatbed with performers and key speakers on the issues of jobs, on the issues of healthcare, and on the issues of immigration reform, and to shut down ICE prisons. So I invite everybody, I'm going to stay on the line in the meeting, but I, we invite everybody to join us on March 27th, Saturday.
Thank you. Ms. Bates, are there any other items, requests to speak?
Yes, Mayor, we have two more. I'm going to call on Maria Grijalva.
Hello there. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. I want to speak very briefly about the vacant seat and the application process. I don't think it's too late to have the application process and to vet applicants. And thank you, Mayor, for putting the information about the Robert's Rules of Orders out there and to remind all the council members that they have to abide by those Robert's Rules of Orders and parliamentary procedures. They are mandated to follow those, and so I hope that we can still follow the traditional path and have the application process for the vacant seat. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Any other requests to speak?
Yes, we have Chi Kanks, Latine. For user ID Chi Kanks, Latine, please go ahead. Let's go to the next one. Let's go to the Sacramento.
Hi, Mayor. Mayor, Mayor Getanoi, council members. My name is Batimagarcia. I recently moved to West Sacramento, and I just wanted to encourage the council members and the mayor to practice democracy and allow us as constituents to vote for the vacancy in the West Sacramento City Council. Thank you for your time and have a good evening.
That's all we have, Mayor, for 1A.
Madam Mayor, could I, if I could interject there, that the item that a couple of speakers spoke about just now is actually on the agenda. It's item 23. So there'll be plenty of time to take public comment from anyone wishing to speak on that item at that time. So it's item 23 on the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, City Manager. Do you have a, okay, and so next we'll be taking up is the Item 1B. I'm going to announce council assignments, request a vote, or discussion, and we'll provide council communications from our designated assignments under Item 1B. These assignments reflect your recommendations and also a need to share responsibilities. Understanding may be challenging with our work schedules. So the city manager and I have worked to provide additional support for you in your assignment. In conversations with you, I understand how recommendations, you know, preserve past work, but as the mayor elected by the city, I will offer some alternative recommendations, which I believe are best positions our city, for our city to represent our best interest in the community. Therefore, would, you know, made these selections to demonstrate unity on these boards where we compete with cities for, you know, funding for transportation, climate change, and other planning grants. So these recommendations represent our legacy to be a successful and thriving city. So now, as mayor, I will be making, you know, unpopular decisions and may face adversity, but that is the part of the role elected into office, and I'm committed to working with everybody to bridge our differences for the greater good of our city. And I encourage you to adopt in the spirit of unity resonator today our country's leaders and our poet laureate Amanda Gorman. We are striving to forge our union with purpose. Our unity will make a stronger city. So with that, here are my recommendations. From the Sacramento Area Council of Governments, Mayor and Councilmember Ledesma is the alternate. For the River City Regional Stadium Financing Authority, the mayor and councilmember Ledesma. For EIFD Public Financing Authority, councilmember Ledesma. For the city council, for the city-county two-by-two, mayor and councilmember Alcala. For a city-school two-by-two, mayor and councilmember Alcala. For the Yolo County Housing Authority, councilmember Orozco. For the Yolo County Executive Commission for the Homeless Tenure Plan, councilmember Orozco. For the Yolo Solani Air Quality Management District, councilmember Alcala and Ledesma as the alternate. For the Sacramento Regional County Sanitation District, councilmember Orozco and Ledesma as the alternate. For the League of Cities, League of California Cities Board, councilmember Alcala. For the Water Resources Association, councilmember Orozco and Ledesma. For the West Sacramento Area Flood Control Agency, councilmember Alcala and Orozco as the alternate. For the Yolo County Consolidated Redevelopment Successor Agency Oversight Board, councilmember Ledesma. For the New Hope Community Development Corporation, councilmember Orozco and Alcala as the alternate. For the Yolo County Transit District, councilmember Ledesma and Guerrero as the alternate. For the Yolo Habitat Conservancy, councilmember Ledesma and Orozco as the alternate. For the Yolosa Basin Sustainable Groundwater Agency, councilmember Orozco and Ledesma as the alternate. And with that, I would like to open it up for a vote.
Madam Mayor, may I?
Yes, you may.
Were these provided to the council members in advance of tonight's meeting?
We, you provided your recommendations, and with that, I incorporated your recommendations into what I just provided. So what is contained are some of the recommendations you provided. And then I just took into consideration everybody's recommendations.
Thank you. Yeah, in previous years, we at least received something in written form. I was writing furiously, trying to figure out which recommendations. I think it would be prudent to at least have the opportunity to see them in written form. So perhaps we could absorb when the meetings are and how they would fit. And perhaps we could table the vote until the next meeting, so we have a chance to take a look at these and make appropriate accommodations to our schedule.
Oh, thank you, Councilmember Orozco. I understand. I know, these are going to be some challenging ones. And I looked at making some recommendations where we do have staff support for some of the more challenging ones with our work schedules. And I, so I understand. But, you know, I do recall Councilmember Sandin took a majority of some really challenging appointment of, you know, boards because she, she had some flexibility with her time, but she also just took a lot. And now I can see that we miss her, her presence and being able to handle some of these things. But we are going to have to share, you know, some of these responsibilities. And I would like to get started with some because what I have been hearing from some of the boards is that they would like to make some assignments, subcommittee assignments, and they would like to convene with the member that is being delegated. So there will be some meetings, and they would like to have the representative at the board meeting.
And if, I'm sorry, Mayor, if I may?
Yes, you may.
Yeah, would you mind, seriously, I was trying to scribble as well, running through this once again.
Sure.
And just, thank you, just a little more slowly, please.
Okay.
Slow this. Thank you.
For the Sacramento Area Council of Governments, the mayor and councilmember Ledesma as the alternate. For the River City Regional Stadium Financing Authority, the mayor and councilmember Ledesma. Are you, are we okay?
Yes.
EIFD Public Financing Authority, councilmember Ledesma. City-county two-by-two, mayor and councilmember Alcala. City-school two-by-two, mayor and councilmember Alcala. Yolo County Housing Authority, councilmember Orozco. Yolo County Executive Commission for the Homeless Tenure Plan, councilmember Orozco. Yolo Solano Air Quality Management District, councilmember Alcala and Ledesma as the alternate. Sacramento Regional County Sanitation District, councilmember Orozco and Ledesma as the alternate. League, are we okay?
I'm sorry, the last one is Regional San, and it's Orozco and me.
Yes, as the alternate.
Thank you.
League of California Cities Board, councilmember Alcala. Water Resources Association, councilmember Orozco and Ledesma. And I think we have William Roberts, who helps out a lot with that. West Sacramento Area Flood Control Agency, councilmember Alcala and Orozco as the alternate. And then now moving on to the Yolo County Consolidated Redevelopment Successor Agency Oversight Board, councilmember Ledesma. New Hope Community Development Corporation. And that meets right after the Yolo County Housing Authority. They go back to back. So I maintained councilmember Orozco and added Alcala as the alternate. And Yolo County Transportation District, councilmember Ledesma and Guerrero. Yolo County, Guerrero is the alternate. Yolo Habitat Conservancy, councilmember Ledesma and Orozco is the alternate. Yolosa Basin Sustainable Groundwater Agency, councilmember Orozco and Ledesma. And on that, William Roberts helps with that meeting as well.
Yeah, which, I'm sorry, I can repeat that last one.
Yolosa Basin Sustainable Groundwater Agency. Yes, Councilmember Alcala?
I'd like to move to accept these appointments.
Is there a second?
Mayor, if there is, I mean, a scheduling issue or challenges with this in terms for us personally or work-wise, how would I run through that?
We could discuss that, so we can, we can figure out how to make it work. So we can, we can, we can do that. If somebody's having a hard time, I can remove you from that at this point and move forward with, you know, if there's, if there's a conflict, I can remove you from that at this point. But I'd like to continue with something, you know, moving forward with those that can accept the assignments.
Is there a schedule of meetings for some of the, because some of these are new for me? That would help.
Yes.
So.
Yes, I think Aaron can provide that, or?
Yes, we do have a kind of a master list of all the different agencies where we have appointments, and that's something we can, we can definitely circulate. And I think the point is that there are meetings that are happening in the next couple of weeks. So I believe that's the mayor's goal for why the appointments are being proposed tonight. So we can definitely send you that list, and if there are conflicts that are identified, like was alluded to, changes can be made. But that's something that we can, we can circulate to the full council and make sure that it's up to date.
And just to add, there are two other appointments, and speaking with SECOG tonight, that I do need to make. And it is the SECOG Bike Share Policy Steering Committee and the Transportation Committee. And I would like to maintain the appointment that we have for SECOG to go along with those two. I mean, we can, you know, Councilmember Ledesma, you can take the lead on it, or I can, I could just appoint us as we are right now, and you could be the alternate, and we can work together on that.
There is a SECOG meeting tomorrow, so I see.
And I think you can attend that at this point, because I think you had a schedule to attend, correct?
Yes, I did. And tomorrow is a really good illustration why to coordinate, because there is also a Flood Control Agency meeting tomorrow. And I'm currently their representative. I'm RD900 on that, so I'll have to manage both, but it's a little bit. So, so again, if, if we can move forward, I know we have a motion on the floor.
We have the, the member Alcala currently recommended for the Flood Control Agency. Councilmember Alcala, can you attend that?
Yes, I can.
Oh, I could attend both tomorrow. Oh, wait, you're, you're, well, I'm sorry, RD, so it'd be.
So you can, you can be, you can be freed up to go to the SECOG while Councilmember Alcala is recommended here for the WASEFA.
Just to clarify that point, RD900, which the council is also the board members for that agency, has a seat on the WASEFA board. And I believe Councilmember Ledesma at this point is that representative. The current rep for the city on WASEFA, I believe, is Councilmember Orozco. So just remember, you have two different seats representing the two different agencies on WASEFA.
And Councilmember Alcala, I'll be giving an update, is on LAFCO now. We, in the city selection committee, we, I appoint, we approved her appointment on LAFCO. Quick question for the city manager. Given that Councilmember Alcala is the appointment on LAFCO for WASEFA, does that overlap?
I'm sorry, I'm trying to follow that one. So she's the appointee to LAFCO from WASEFA?
No, she, for the city committee.
Right.
So there was an appointment made, that city selection committee makes the local agency formation commission of Yolo County, is that LAFCO, yeah? And so is there any overlap with that in WASEFA?
I, actually, I don't know off the top of my head. We'd have to look at that master list of schedules and see.
Okay.
I think that would be our, our goal, once we, because we're, you know, we're getting the information on appointments also tonight. So we can try to align your appointments with that schedule and identify if there's any conflicts and let council members know accordingly.
Okay.
You don't have the option to change later.
WASEFA meets on the third Thursday, so she's fine, because this is on the fourth Thursday at 9:00 AM. So she'll be fine. She'll, she'll be able to do, if she's here available. Councilmember Alcala, then you're fine. They don't overlap.
Yes.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Absolutely appreciate the opportunity to be considered on different committees. Currently, you'd asked if there were any conflicts, and I do have a conflict with two of them. And that includes the Yolo Subbasin Groundwater Agency and the Regional Water Authority. And so you'd asked if there would be a conflict, then you'd consider removal. That's basically just a matter of conflict with my daytime work. In the past, I've served the city on behalf of the, you know, I've been the representative on behalf of the city on the city-county two-by-two and the city-school two-by-two, both of which have not conflicted with my regular employment as they're at lunch and they're after work. But I see that I've been removed from both of those commissions and instead replaced on water-related matters. And while I have no objection of doing the work for water, it's just a matter of my livelihood and ensuring that I could manage effectively both obligations. And without a schedule, like, that's why I've mentioned at the beginning, normally we have a bit of a schedule, so it's really hard to make these decisions just by listening and not knowing any further information, which is why I had made the recommendation to perhaps consider approval in two weeks when we have our next meeting. And it's not out of, it was just a matter of receiving the information, you know, in a matter of minutes and having to make a decision.
Thank you, Councilmember Orozco. Yes, you do have a number of assignments. The regional sanitation, the, a lot of the homeless and housing. So I do see quite a few, and also, you know, serving as an alternate to the Yolo Habitat Conservancy. So there, there are quite a few in there that, and I put in Councilmember Alcala and quite a few as well, that are going to take her, her date, her mornings pretty much almost every week, from what I can tell. There's the Yolo Solano Air Quality Management District that takes up a morning. League of California Cities is going to take up half a day in the WASEFA, and also, you know, the, there's one other, there's LAFCO that's not listed here. So she's, she's absorbing many daytime, you know, because she has the availability. And she will also get staff support when, you know, there's a conflict in her personal, you know, doctor's appointment or something happens. So I do understand that I try to balance as many of these so that we can fit it in our schedules. And do you, so at this point, it is, it is given, and given my role in looking at other assignments that I have to take, you know, with the US mayors, and also the National League of Cities, and our, you know, other challenging, you know, situations where we're going to be trying to draw down federal funding and state funding, and helping to address that outside of, outside of these committee meetings, so that we can be be able to address some of our economic relief efforts. So I'll be pretty tied up as well, and trying to keep myself flexible and available for all of those other situations. So I know it's, it's a pretty tight situation for all of us. And those two, particularly William Roberts, can provide some staff support. He's been attending those and is familiar. And so it would be, it would be good to have one person on. And so it'd be, it would be good to have one person on water-related issues to be attending. If Councilmember Ledesma is being, is willing to take on the lead and then Councilmember Orozco, if we can be the alternate, you know, if there's a time when Councilmember Ledesma cannot attend, um, be willing to consider that. Or we can put it on Councilmember Alcala to take that as well. Those, uh, you know, those are, you know, it's another, yeah, like you mentioned, a daytime activity. So, um, Councilmember Alcala, are you willing, or Councilmember Ledesma to take on that, you know, based on that recommendation you just offered?
I, I, I'm, I am not. Um, so again, I'm, I'm, I would like to get just a uh, a list, schedule of the meetings, sorry, unclear on what the commitments are. I have no problem with the work and I, I appreciate, um, Madam Mayor, uh, the assignments, I think, are generally fine. I just, I'm asking for, um, time to, again, at least for me, just I, how we would sync this up with our schedules and whatever else. And, um, if there's some that we can offline, maybe switch before we put them into a vinyl vote, that might be a better way to approach it. I know there's some, um, uh, critical ones that are coming up, namely CACOG. And I think we have generally agreement that I, if us, if we can kind of manage those uh, between you and I on basically three subcommittees that are with it, we can, we can manage through that. And maybe another, I know there's a motion on the floor, but again, just some, just allow us some time to sort of settle, settle in and in.
Sure. I, I think if, if we can take up CACOG, um, region, the River City Regional Financing Authority, EIFD, city county two by two, we'll leave out where Councilmember Orozco is on the Housing Authority, we'll leave those off. And, um, the Yolosa Air Quality Management District and, um, we'll.
Sorry?
Yolosa, so the ones where Councilmember Alcala is, um, is listed as, is the recommendation, which also includes the League of California Cities and WASECA. So she can attend tomorrow's meeting and get settled into that. I, and then also, um, we have the Yolo County Transportation District where you're recommended and, um, Yolo Habitat Conservancy have been asked about that today. We can, we can. What was it you're going back on? You were the alternate all along, but I've been attending, so, yeah. Yeah.
Madam Mayor, um, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I, um, I have no objection to Yolo County Housing, New Hope, Homeless Tenure, or SASD.
Okay, so you want to, so for Water Resources Association and Yolosa Basin, you just want to be removed from that?
Please.
Okay. Uh, Councilmember Alcala, will you be able to take that? Yes, okay. Okay, so those are, so if you want to, you know, maintain then what we currently have and just put Councilmember Alcala and then as for Yolosa Basin Sustainable Groundwater Agency and Councilmember Ledesma is the alternate. And for the Water Resources Association, Councilmember Alcala and Councilmember Ledesma is the alternate. And so that would be a revised motion. Um, would you be willing to revise your motion?
Yes, I will revise the motion to those, uh, new reassignments.
Okay.
Okay. So, um, Madam Mayor, with, just going forward, um, this kind of work, I think, in the spirit of, we need to move forward, we need to find a place to do the work of the city. With the amended motion, I think we, we agree that we can take some of these on and, and maybe get to some, solidify some other ones, I'm good. But just going forward, I'd just ask that some coordination on this, it's just, it really is, I'm just ensuring that we can all fit these in and, and, and there's no intent here to, um, change kind of what you're proposing, just, just some collaboration in terms of our ability to fit this in and find it. And I appreciate, uh, Councilmember Alcala stepping in to take a couple more, but I'll second the motion with the amended motion.
Okay, thank you. Um, Madam Clerk, please, please call the roll. Oh, oh, and so with that, Councilmember Alcala moved and Councilmember Ledesma second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes, Councilmember Ledesma.
Aye.
Councilmember Orozco.
Aye.
Councilmember Alcala.
Aye.
And Mayor Guerrero.
Aye. Okay, with that, I'm going to ask for any, um, reports on your committee assignments?
I do have one, um, if I may, Madam Mayor.
Yes, you may.
Thank you. Uh, Monday, the eleventh, the Yolo County Transportation District met. Um, there are some things on that, that agenda. First of all, congratulations to Patrick Gill from our resident West Sacramento who joined, was selected to the Citizens Advisory Committee on Yolo Bus. Uh, so thank you, Patrick, for applying for that and appreciate your service supporting our city. Um, also, in that meeting, we continued, uh, the emergency authority for the executive director. We are still in the middle of a pandemic and keeping that, uh, just as we are and still in, um, emergency authority, the, the executive director has, will continue in that as we continue to juggle the effects of the pandemic. And he has the authority to make changes as necessary. We got a presentation on fiscal audit, which was, came out clean and fine. Uh, we got a financial status update, which is more of the same as has been for the last, uh, since the pandemic started, which is reductions in fair revenues, but being rescued by the CARES Act, uh, funding. And, um, so this is happened, there is, there is fiscal impact from the pandemic on the Transportation District. Federal funding will be important for that going forward. Uh, there's discussion about development of a short run, short-range transit plan, um, which would entail looking at routes and maybe some rerouting, um, given all we know, again, on, uh, on, and some planning exercise, financial planning exercises, which are important and necessary, uh, over a five to 10-year period. So we gave direction to do that, as well as got an update on the comprehensive, comprehensive operational analysis, which is continuing. And we should be seeing some outreach to our city. I've asked the executive director to give updates to, um, um, to our Transportation Mobility, um, Commission. And so, um, city manager and to our, uh, our staff, uh, in transportation, they should probably reach out to YCTD and make sure that we get feedback on that from West Sacramento. That's all I have to report. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Ledesma. Are there any other reports? Councilmember Orozco?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, on January thirteenth, uh, twenty twenty-one, the Sacramento Regional County Sanitation District men, members met. Uh, we chose a chair and a vice chair, uh, chair being Carrie Howell out of Folsom and our vice chair being Rich Desmond, who's a new member. We also welcome a variety of new members from around the region, including Katie Valenzuela and Mybang from Sacramento, as well as Rich Desmond and Bobby Singh Allen from Out Grove. Uh, we, the majority of our conversation revolved around amendments to a master interagency agreement between Sacramento Regional County Sanitation District and its contributing agencies. And as you know, uh, the West Sacramento is a contributing agency. We joined Regional SAN in two thousand and seven and sexually annexed with them to ensure that our sanitation needs were met and that we didn't facilitate that, um, those efforts on our own. But the, the master agency agreement is going to expire in two thousand and twenty-four. We want to make sure that the contributing agencies are recognized in the same fashion as all agencies that are part of Regional SAN. And I am a part of the subcommittee along with Yolo County Supervisor Oscar Viegas. We represent this region on that subcommittee. So we have our next meeting coming up on the twenty-seventh and I am looking forward to providing a report to our council. But it is, um, it's very exciting to see such new, uh, new faces on the board. And, um, there are a lot of wonderful things ahead, including, um, we're going to be hiring a new executive director for the, for Regional SAN and as our crew blocker is going to be retiring. So we look forward to the passing of the torch as well. And with that, that concludes my presentation, um, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Orozco. Um, and no other reports? Okay, um, for my report, um, you know, as we watched in horror and disbelief to what happened at the US Capitol on January seventh, the US Conference of Mayors had an emergency meeting to discuss the insurrection and the impact it may potentially have on cities. So this included participation with interim Police Chief Strange, who joined police chiefs around the country to assess and what to anticipate on or around the inauguration days and to prepare for continued riots around the country. You know, I do condemn these violent acts, which was instigated by our president to invade and disrespect our democracy in the US Capitol. And I'm saddened by the loss of a law enforcement officer who was beaten during this riot and also the fear that it created in, in our, in our home, our US Capitol. So let us not forget that in the face of these threats, our democracy prevailed. I'm grateful for our congressional leaders who stood their ground and continue the people's work and their courageous work to certify the election with the official transfer of power. And I'm hopeful for a peaceful transition with our incoming president and vice president and their cabinet. And we all look forward to working with them on behalf of the city. As mayors, um, we are grateful for our city councils for their public service work around the clock to protect our residents and grateful for our law enforcement officers who have been out on the street, you know, time away from their families, out there protecting our community and keeping us safe. It has been a, you know, a time where it's unstable and, um, maybe fearful. But walking out, um, we feel safe, knowing that they are out there protecting us and, um, also protecting our residents, our civic institutions and our local democracy from continued threats. On January ninth, the Yolosa Air Quality District Board convened and appointed committee members for calendar year two thousand and twenty-one. I asked that they revisit those appointments to include West Sacramento representation now Councilmember Alcala among those committees at the next meeting. And we also received an informational report on air monitoring and an information report discussed in two thousand and twenty-one Clean Air Fund, uh, program direction. On January eleventh, the Yolosa Basin Groundwater Agency convened and approved fiscal year two thousand and twenty-one budget amendment to fund GSP-related activities outside of the GSP grant and directly from Yolosa Basin Groundwater Agency funds. The total budget amendment requested for GSP-related consultant services for January through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one amounts to approximately a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And so we authorized the chair to execute a master services agreement with GEI and SCI consultants and receive a presentation on multi-benefit managed acquire recharge pilot. We received an update on groundwater sustainability plan development as well. On January twentieth, the day, obviously, the City Selection Committee, um, briefly met, um, quick meeting to appoint the new chair, which was myself, we meet once a year, by the way, the local agency formation commissioner, which is now Councilmember Alcala, to fulfill the vacated seat by Bab San Dean for the term ending May two thousand and twenty-four. And, uh, we originally had a position for the Remote Access Network Board member, that is a one-year post. Now, it is being, um, uh, taken by Mayor Bill Blazey. And we affirmed Kimberly McKinney, City of Woodland Financial Officers, who represented it to the Financial Oversight Committee for a three-year term. And that concludes my report. Next item on the agenda is item one C, they are council appointments. Reappointments, removals from city and non-city boards and commissions and council intermediary representatives. We have, um, several county-related positions, and that's the library advisory, which I'm going to appoint Kristen Peacock, the Sac Yolo Mosquito and Vector Control District Trustee. I'll appoint Raul Dianda, Yolo County Commission on Aging and Adult Services, uh, Suzanne Reed. And for the remaining commissions, we had over ninety applications, um, for fifty-six commission positions. And this was a very difficult decision to make, given the breadth of knowledge and expertise among all of our applicants. The recommendations are based on having geographic diverse representation on our, on our commissions. And for those, um, who will not be appointed tonight, I will reach out to you and work with you to see how we can work together to enhance your involvement in our city to serve our community. Um, this will be, um, the currently appointed list. For the Arts, Culture and Historic Preservation, Denise Stompe, Alicia Olson will be the alternate, Marva Diaz, Laura Sheridan, Cheryl Gleason, Peggy Bell, Kerry Corowitz, and Ray Perez Onodera. For appeals, Diane Gould, Harry Hines, Shayna Levine, Blake Sekera, Janelle Derrick, and Valeria Garchenko. For disaster, um, it'll be Al Caciato and Lisa McKee will be the alternate. For, uh, the Economic Development and Housing Commission, Daniel Olson, Chris White, Ernie Guerra, Suni Thornton, Dale, um, Dale Green, our DJ, and, uh, and JP Singh, uh, Andrew Truman Kim, and, um, our alternate will be Ron Price. For utilities, Dana Cordano, Matthew Criswell, Jennifer Green, Meredith Petrie, Keith Saliano, Tiffany Solorio, Peter Londo, and for our alternate, Heather Choi. For parks, it'll be Aruj Ahmad, David Janz, Suzanne Reed, Vanessa Castro, Don Schatzel, Heather McTai, Carlo Alta Morano, and Danny Sandoval will be the alternate. For planning commission, it will be Aria Berliner, Teresa Sablan, Alex Hirsch, Joe Dianda, Brian Steger, Elizabeth Esquivel, Sabrina Lockhart, and Andrew Mittelman will be the alternate. For transportation, it will be Valerie Zimmer, Samara Liechtenstein, Sheila Johnston, Abteen Kashkulin, Danny Thurkle, Roy Sines, Rob Gunn, and Tom Bostain will be the alternate. So those are the, um, recommendations.
I move to approve.
Sorry, um, I was just gonna ask, uh, could you repeat, uh, planning, please?
Planning, it is going to be Aria Berliner, Teresa Sablan, Alex Hirsch, Joe Dianda, Brian Steger, Elizabeth Esquivel, Sabrina Lockhart, and Andrew Mittelman will be the alternate. The, uh, I can ask the city attorney, I just wanted to, I'm sorry, um, so I'll accept a motion for to approve these?
I moved already, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Um, I'll accept a second.
Um, Madam Mayor, I get, um, two things, um, if I can, um, comment, just, thank you. So I understand, um, the one, uh, as mayor, you get, uh, the ability to appoint, nominate and point. And there were a few of you asked for our feedback and we gave you feedback for residents who have served the community or would continue, just could continue to serve our new people. And we provided those and, um, well, a few of the folks that I've recommended made this list. And I'm disappointed, to be honest, that a lot, that, um, many weren't. And, um, this is your, um, one area as mayor, you have the opportunity to, again, make the recommendation and you have the right, you had the ability to, uh, vet no action here results, I think. And I'll ask the city manager and city attorney to make sure it's clear that this does not, I don't believe, this, does this require a vote or does this? Uh, I, I don't know if we.
Yes, yes, there is a requirement under the city code that the council approves the recommendations. You have, council has thirty days in which to take action. If the council does not take action, then the appointments stand.
Right. So I think with that said, it's that if we did not pass this or we weren't able to vote on it, um, they would stand, is that right, Jeff?
Yes, sorry. Um, yes, after thirty days.
Thank you. Thank you.
And in the meantime, there are commissions that have meetings scheduled on the calendar, and the current commissioners would continue to serve until that term is reached.
So, and thank you for the clarification. So again, I just, this was an opportunity for us to work together, collaborate, find some common ground. I certainly understand folks from around the city and certainly people needing or having representation and a frustration, and I do. I was not expecting at all that some folks would not serve, but you know, it's just, I'm frankly just disappointed. But there were some folks who did, were able to make it, and for the folks who did, were not, who weren't asked, that applied but were not asked to serve in this nomination, thank you for, for, I'm always, I'm always amazed at the amount of people who apply for these positions. I'm always amazed that people want to get involved in their city. I thank you for those who have served, and I would hope that this body would find a way to recognize the folks who have served on some of these commissions for the last two, for sometimes longer years, because their service has brought us collectively where we are. So, but again, I, I'm not gonna second this, you're, I'm gonna pass on the vote on this. I wish everybody the support on this well, and but again, it was just an opportunity for us to collaborate, and I think it was just a missed opportunity. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Ledesma. I do also agree that we should recognize those that have been serving for quite a few years on council and, you know, have done incredible work, you know, to do, you know, what we have done to get to this beautiful city that we have today, many of whom I've served with, and in receiving applications and receiving an interest by a number of applicants who have been interested in serving on these commissions for quite some time. I am taking this opportunity to allow newer members to participate in, you know, strategic, you know, planning for our future, because I think they are interested in that opportunity as well. And I do want to make sure that we recognize those that have submitted the application and those that I've met with, you know, because there were, there were a number of applicants who I didn't know and just wanted to get a chance to speak with them and did, some of them did not get appointed. And we try to find ways to see what we can do to work together. And I'm gonna, you know, go back and, so I know there's a level of disappointment among a number of people. It's such, I wish we could create more commissions, but it'll be a workload for our staff so we can get more participation. You know, some of the additional commissions I'd like to establish, you know, one is in speaking with the interim chief. He just liked more public engagement and establish, you know, a group so that he can get more public engagement on, you know, contributing, you know, for police outreach, and that's another opportunity that I'd like to see further engagement. You know, also like a budget oversight on, you know, so we can maintain fiscal transparency. I think that's important to have. And if you're interested, we can take a look at those, you know, recommendations that you are considering for the Budget Oversight Commission. We could establish something like that so that we can have fiscal transparency and accountability on our expenditures here in the city. That's a commitment I made, and I'd like to be able to see how we can establish that as well in the future. So, you know, there's another interest by, you know, a commissioner who said, I like an accountability and equity, you know, commission. I think there's a lot of opportunity to have growth in equity here in the city. So, you know, I'd be interested in establishing that as well. We have, I think, a lot of applicants who had that background in equity and whether it be transportation, housing, you know, environment. So we just, we just, we just have a lot going on that, you know, I think there are many opportunities if we can, you know, continue that dialogue in our strategic planning retreat, interested in seeing what more we can do to expand on these opportunities in the future and bring those applicants who were not approved today to be a part of a future commission as part of that process.
Mayor, may I?
Councilmember Alcala?
I would like to recommend also we send out some certificates of appreciation to the people who have served on our, on our different committees. I'm not certain if the city already does that or not, but I think that would be a very nice gesture on the part of everyone who's very grateful for the time having served on these committees.
Thank you, Councilmember Alcala.
We do, we do have a process where we recognize outgoing commissioners. Typically, that's also done at a council meeting. So just, just a answer to that.
Okay, so if we're not going to take a vote, those are the recommendations that I will deliver over to our clerk. And if you'd like a copy, you can obtain it from the clerk tomorrow. Make sure that the clerk has it and I'll, there was a big list that I had to fill in by hand, so I'll drop that off, and I'll also type it up and send it to her so that you will know who the commissioners are. And for the city manager, do you know when the orientation is going to be for, for these assignments?
I don't believe we scheduled that yet, because we were pending getting the appointments made. So I know that there's a schedule that the clerk's office and the assistant city manager are developing, so we can, we can follow up on that. A lot of it also depends on council availability or your availability, so.
Oh, that's right, that's true. Okay, thank you.
We'll, we'll take that step next.
Okay, thank you. So hopefully, within thirty days, these appointments can get started on their assigned commission. Okay. So with that, next item is our, so I just want to make sure we can, we're all done, you know, sharing any conversation on this particular item. Okay, with that, we will go to the consent agenda and I think there is one item that has been pulled on the consent agenda. I have a hard copy. I know the numbers are different, or maybe it isn't different. On your copy, for the city manager, I just wanted to just remind you that our hard copy may not reflect what's on online. So on number six, it's the Consideration of Approval Contract Amendment, number three.
Yes, and I want to pull item fourteen.
Actually, I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, it's, I'll just read the title. It's, it's item six on the online agenda, which is the official agenda. It's Consideration of Council Approval for Updates to the Existing Citywide Freeway Maintenance Agreement with Caltrans. That, that item has been requested to be moved over to a future meeting.
Okay, do you, since we receive the hard copy, which isn't matching your, what is online, do you, do you know which one that, that we have, so three council members have the hard copy?
Right, and I apologize for the confusion there.
Oh, so that's number seven.
On your hard copy, it's, it's number seven. We mailed out, we originally had the election item ahead of everything else, which, which would have been kind of out of sequence with what we normally do. So we, we corrected that right away. Apologize for the, you know, you have the hard copy that's different, but online is correct, it's number six. And I read the title, the title is what I said, it's the Citywide Freeway Maintenance Agreement.
So we're not, so we're not taking any action on item number six, which is the Consideration of Council Approval of Updates for the Existing Citywide Freeway tonight? We're pulling that off the agenda?
Right, the Caltrans was not prepared to move forward, so we'll come back to that later.
Okay, okay. Go ahead, Councilmember Alcala, what number on your book?
Number fourteen.
Number fourteen on your book?
Yes.
Okay. Any other items that you would like to pull at this point? Okay.
Items on consent, I'm sorry.
Items on consent is what I'm asking for, whether you'd like to pull any?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Sorry, I would like to pull items fifteen and sixteen, please.
So that's the Economic Development and Housing item, Consideration of Agreement for Services with Yola County Children's Alliance?
As well as the Mercy Coalition, yes, on sixteen.
On sixteen, okay. Okay, we'll start in numerical order with Consideration of a Resolution of the City Council of the City of West Sacramento Establishing a Budget Appropriation of $2,091,752 for Supportive Services and Operational Costs Related to Home Key Program at the Roadway Inn to Provide Interim Housing for Individuals Experiencing or at Risk of Homelessness to Respond to the COVID-19 Pandemic with Grants from Enterprise Community Partners, Inc., Emergency Solutions Coronavirus Round Two, and Community Development Block Grant. Councilmember Alcala?
Yes, I did have some questions. Did we have a bid process for this?
Yeah, good evening, Councilmember Alcala. We did not have a bid process for this. So as the council may recall, the acquisition of the Roadway Inn was done in December tenth of last year. And we just didn't have enough time, unfortunately, to go through our regular procurement process, which typically would take anywhere from two to three months, depending on the type of project that we are requesting solicitations on. Because this is a program that has urgent needs, we decided to look at current providers that were being used for the current project room key that was being administered by, and still being administered by Yolo County Housing Health and Human Services Agency. So we turned to those providers to obtain proposals to continue the services that the project participants were receiving at the roadway inn. So unfortunately, we just didn't have the, the opportunity to go through a procurement process like we normally would for this specific service agreement.
Could you not have done that? I understand the urgency back in December, but after that, shouldn't there have been a process where you went ahead and put this out to bid?
So when we discussed the services with Yolo County Housing, we, we asked them if they could continue to provide the case management services for a period of time until we entered into a contract, knowing that Yolo County Housing, I'm sorry, Yolo County Health and Human Services will only be providing those case management supportive services for a finite period of time until we had to take over those case management and supportive services. So, you know, unfortunately, we didn't, we did not have the time to, to do that procurement process so that there isn't a gap in service between when the county agreed to provide the services to when we had to begin providing those services, because again, most of that procurement takes at a minimum a two-month period, usually, you know, closer to three months.
So are we going to begin this process of doing bids? Because this seems like, almost like a no-bid contract, that's.
It was a no-bid contract, yes, and, you know, the way that the contracts are written right now, we are recommending a one-year contract.
I'm sorry. I apologize, you sort of hear you.
Yes, can you hear me now?
Hello?
Yes, can you hear me?
I'm sorry, yes, now I can hear you, yes.
Correct, so the way that the agreements are written now, they're one-year agreements for twelve months, with an option to extend for an additional year. So during that initial twelve-month period, we can begin the procurement process, and it'll give us actually enough time to find out if we need to make any programmatic changes to the, the Home Key Program, if the case management services that we are currently receiving services is what we need, if we need to make some additional changes. And that is something that we can begin, but again, what, what is really important is that we don't want to lose the services because the county will only be providing those through the end of this month.
If I, if I could interject there too, there's the added benefit in this case, if we're talking about the Yolo County Children's Alliance contract, where they have pre-existing relationships with the clients, they've been doing the work since April. So while it's accurate to say that we didn't do a procurement process for this particular contract for the timing reasons that we were faced with, there is that additional consideration that we effectively are taking over the contracts that are currently in place through the county for those same services. So there's a, there's a direct connection there. So it's not your typical, it's not as if we, we went out and picked an organization that didn't have a prior track record with the programs. There was some basis in why, and or, under the urgency we went with them.
I can understand the urgency. I guess my concern has been that this is still no bid. And, you know, in order to be transparent, we should have that process in place.
Well, I think in terms of transparency, you have the item in front of you that has the, the services proposed with the contract and everything right there.
I was talking about before. I think, I think it was important, I understood that. My understanding was it was a two, a two-month window.
Right, where we didn't, we didn't have the time to run up the process. Right.
And I just think it's really important, even, I, I understand. I just, future, I understand urgency right now.
Right. Yeah, and I think that's where you're hearing staff's, staff's recommendation is to, we could, we, we need the services in place now. We feel like the term is adequate to give us time to assess whether there, you know, we need to make any changes, and as Raul suggested, we could come back and do a procurement process during that initial term, and then bring back an extension to either this contract or a new contract with a new provider based on that solicitation. But, but in terms of, you know, what we're doing right now, I feel that we've, you know, we've made the case in the staff report for why continuing the contracts that are currently in place with the county through the city. There was the vetting process there because we had nine months of experience working with this particular agency, so.
I understand the familiarity you're talking about, but I still believe strongly in a bid process. There may be an agency who can also provide these services perhaps at a better cost.
Sure.
Perhaps even with more efficiency, but we wouldn't know because we didn't put it out to bid.
Right, and I, and I think what you're hearing in terms of the suggestion is to give it some time to take shape, so we can, we can keep the stability of the program. And in that one-year period, we would have adequate time to run a procurement for the future years, because remember, we have, Raul, correct me if I'm wrong, but we have five years under this program that we have to maintain operations, so.
Okay, I do want to see a bid process, though. I think that's going to be really critical to, to, to do. I know that's what we always did on school board, it was very open, you know, and competitive bids are important, especially given, given a lot of budgets and all.
Definitely, thank you. And, and, you know, we, we normally do go through a competitive process when, when we do take these contracts before council, but again, unfortunately, because of the, the very expedited timelines that the Home Key Program had, and a lot of the uncertainty that we were dealing with, we unfortunately did not have time to do that. And as the city manager pointed out, we turned to those service providers that were already in place under the county program and sought services with them so that we can continue to provide those services with the same providers that had built that, that relationship with those program participants and the repertoire that a lot of these participants need in order to feel comfortable working with service providers. But again, if that twelve-month period will allow us to go through a procurement process, if, if that is what the council desires.
I would encourage a bid process.
Thank you, and I would support that. And also, just for this particular, for these funding sources, I do know that we'll be having an audit at some point in time because of the coronavirus relief funding had some, some measures in place where we will be audited, and no-bid contracts are always frowned upon, you know, at the federal, different level of government. And so, you know, demonstrating that we are, A, you know, doing our part in putting this out to bid. I know there's a compressed time period, period, especially with Project Home Key because we were down to the minute before that term expired, and then we received the additional time with, with the expenditure, but, you know, we were, we were really pushing it till the deadline to be able to secure Home Key funding. And then, and then immediately launching after that to be able to implement it and that flexibility we had in the city was a, we were able to leverage getting the coronavirus relief for purchasing Project Roadkey, and that's, that's where the governor came out twice and was a press conference demonstrating how local governments can be nimble and And was a press conference demonstrating how local governments can be nimble in providing the resources. For those that are unsheltered. So just appreciate all the partnerships in place. But just being mindful that these are federal dollars and we will be audited. And we just want to make sure we have all the checks and balances in place. You know, moving forward, because I anticipate we'll be going through this for a long period of time. So just managing this. And yet I know. City manager knows that I don't like no bid contracts as well. It's an ongoing issue of mine. So just moving forward to the extent that we can to, you know, put our part, you know, and I think it also helps. To, you know, entice other interests in any other interest groups who are willing to do business here in West Sacramento. To have a stake so that we can have more competition. Because I think if we only, you know, fund one particular agency. Only one becomes, you know, has the strength to deliver the services. But if we can. You know, expand our capacity among the service agencies who can qualify for this and. Build those relationships as you described with our. You know, unsheltered guests, then I think that would help us. We'd be better off because I think that competition can, you know. You know, help with what the cost of doing this. If we don't have competition, it'll increase our cost of doing this.
I just wanted to mention also, and the optics are, in reality, also, we have supervisor whose wife does run, you know, the Children's Alliance. So. You know, optics are important, I think, for our city council.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Just have one more suggestion on this. If the consensus among the council is to go with a shorter term contract, that would then lead to an RFQ process, our recommendation would be. For this item and the one, the parallel item with the Mercy Coalition, to do the same thing on both items. We did actually do a bid process. Well, I hate to even call it a bid process. It's a request for services. So it's not like a public works bid. There is a difference. But on the item that relates to the property management. We did actually do an RFQ that was unsuccessful. It's detailed in the report. So that item is sort of different if you're comfortable. With the terms of the contract, that's a different agenda item. But for the Housing Authority. It is a little distinct because we did have time to actually put that out. We didn't have time for either of the services contracts.
Okay. All right, and is there, I've been opening up the public comment for this item. Are there any comments from the public, Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor. I see three raised hands.
Okay, are you able to identify who they are?
I have Maria Gravava.
Okay, and each individual has three minutes to speak on this item. Maria Gravava, you are open to speak.
Thank you for this opportunity to speak. I want to speak really briefly regarding opening this. Up to a bid process. I really don't appreciate the city manager. Trying to argue why. There is no bid process. I think the council member has suggested the importance of long term. The having a bid process. And we already know that the go to person and because of the immediate. Need was Children's Alliance. Fine, that's all good, but for long term purposes, the council member has. Instead, the important thing is to go to. In bidding and so has the mayor and is really disrespectful for the city manager to keep trying to justify repeatedly. That why we're not in an open bidding process. And so that's very disrespectful to the city manager. Towards the council member Alcala. That's my public comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Thank you, Maria. And I wanted to. Also let you know that the clerk will give you a thirty second warning as you get to that mark so that you can wrap up your remarks. So we'll take up the next speaker.
Yes, we have from phone number nine one six nine four seven seven five one zero.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Melton, and thank you for hearing me. I just wanted to make a comment in that. In the middle of a pandemic and knowing. That there is a service provider out there who can't, who knows what they're doing and doesn't need to reinvent the wheel. Is a safe bet and a good way to go. I don't understand, I understand long term implications and having a bidding. Having people have the opportunity to make bids on these contracts, but given the current situation. I don't think you have time to do that. And I feel a little bit like. Anybody who does think that they do might be living in a little bit of a fairy tale. I am a registered nurse who is. Tired and working every day in the middle of COVID. We're all suffering. People are losing their jobs. People are dying. Without family members at their bedside, and I don't think this is the time to make the kind of a gamble or take the time to. Look at long term bids when we know that we have an amazing service that can help people. Thank you.
Next, we have Mr. Rob Gun.
Hello, good evening, council. So it sounds like that what's being suggested is a sole sourcing of a procurement contract. And I just want to bring up that I hope that the city attorneys looked at two CFR two hundred dot three twenty dot C. Which talks about non-competitive procurement contracts. And the criteria that must be met in order to issue these contracts, because I would hate for the city to not abide by federal. Abide by the code of federal regulations and get them some trouble. So some of these requirements are that they have to, basically you have to meet one of the requirements. Some of them are. That the items are only available from a single source or there's a public emergency. Or that after solicitation of sources, it is only deemed that one company applied. So just something that I just wanted to throw out there, and I hope that the city manager and city attorney has looked at this code of federal regulation. Thank you.
Thank you. If there are no other public comments, Madam Clerk?
Except me, here.
Thank you so much, everybody, for your comments and close the public comment, bring it back to council. Any other comments for. Mr. Huerta and the city manager. Yes, Councilmember Roscoe.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Over the last. Five, six years that I've been an active member in the city of West Sacramento, whether as an independent resident or in the capacity of an elected official. I've had the opportunity to work with a variety of different organizations, which is why I actually pulled items. Like I said, they're numbered fourteen and fifteen now. I have them on fifteen, sixteen in the paper packet. But. With respect to the contract with Yolo County Children's Alliance, I did spend a number of hours speaking with city staff. As well as our city manager, as well as the executive director of the organization. Over the last six years, I've seen Yolo County Children's Alliance be an active presence in West Sacramento. Doing fantastic work when it comes to feeding families over the holidays or providing warm coats or school supplies. And then recently, as Mayor Guerrero and Councilmember Alcala know, providing toys to at-risk kids in the community. Several months ago, YCCA was given the opportunity to do services in the Project Room Key program. And did a fantastic job. And I'm not saying that as a biased. City council member who just happens to be interacting with them on the regular. But rather, talking to people who are actually involved in that program and being a volunteer with that program. In fact. My little boy made eighty burritos for the members that live there. And we've worked very closely with our homeless coordinator, Mark Sawyer. Who also speaks very highly of the services that have been provided. What I understand, because I do understand the concerns, and I agree with that with my colleagues that. Were it not for unusual circumstances. We should have probably gone through and made sure that the organizations that are servicing these programs are. You know, perhaps we do go through a bid process. I'm not arguing with that. What I'm saying is, under these circumstances. YCCA was proven. And they've done a fantastic job. And I can understand why staff would have given the consideration to the organization considering they had a positive track record and were. Widely recommended by several members of city staff as well as other members in the community. With that said, I also know that another organization, which is in the subsequent item, was granted an opportunity to participate. I also know, because I've been on the board of Yolo County Children's Alliance up until December twentieth, twenty twenty. That the organization goes through audits every year, and every year those audits do reflect a very positive, above average outcomes. And so. I don't think that our confidence should be shaken. If anything, we should be encouraged that we're having an opportunity to give our. You know, an opportunity to local organization that does fantastic work that we. You know, we certainly can point to fantastic examples of what they've done. They know this community and they work very well with the staff that's assigned there. So I have no problem with the. With the. The contract going to YCCA or Mercy Coalition. We'll talk about that in just a moment. I also wanted to, what I wanted to talk about was the scope of services, because I was very encouraged by this. Ultimately, my goal with Project Home Key. Is to help assist people to get back into a place where they're integrated into the mainstream society and they are able to find ways of. Becoming self-sufficient or at least gathering, garnering services to help them live a more independent life. And so I appreciate that the onsite intensive case management and the permanent housing readiness. And the professional supportive services and transportation items are on this scope of services. Ultimately, I know firsthand that YCCA can provide great. Resources, including, you know, like it says here, Burt's or Viggas, social security cards, credit reports. These are the things that are debilitating for people in this community. Because you can't get a job or you can't get a driver's license unless you have proper documentation and whatnot. So these are very encouraging to me. And I know that I have all the confidence in YCCA to do a great job. They've done solid work and they come highly recommended. I did have some questions that I received answers to initially for the budget amount. Prior to the meeting, so I won't ask those questions in open forum at this point. But. I want to thank staff for trying to bring this together in just a short amount of time. I know this is a very, very difficult task. We had. A long list, a long list of tasks in order to get something like this pulled off. And look what we have. We are one of the few cities that get a chance to house sixty of the most vulnerable people in our community and give them services and help them. Have a life, they got a chance at life that they otherwise would not have had. So I'm very proud of the program and I look forward to seeing it move forward successfully. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Roscoe. Any other comments? At this time, and I have a question for Councilmember Alcala and for Mr. Huerta. Is there some clarity on whether this should be pooled for a modified? Or is this going to be approved as is, from what I'm hearing?
Well, if I'm understanding correctly, I don't believe that. There is a desire to do the additional twelve month extension, only the twelve month initial term of the service agreement. And as we mentioned previously, that'll allow us time to go through a procurement process. And allow us time to see what programmatic changes we have to make to those service agreements. So the change would be to only recommend the approval of a one-year contract. And the staff would come back once the procurement process has been completed before that twelve month period. For recommendation on a new contract with the second year and the remaining years of the program.
Okay, that's correct. That's correct. Okay, thank you. Thank you so much. I, you know, want to add, you know, that. All the staff have done. Long working hours to achieve what we have achieved with Project Home Key. This was a very, very complicated project. And all the support that came through since, you know, it was Project Room Key at first. And, you know, everybody came in and stepped in to contribute. And filling up those rooms with people who didn't have any shelter at all. And during the pandemic, it was very threatening. I think we noticed. A major decline in nonprofit organizations who were willing to provide support because of, you know, the fear of death. Because, you know, the consequences it would have if you were exposed to COVID, real, realistic threats. And so a number of our organizations, you know, had to close up. They're run by retirees and people who just volunteer. There's a lot of volunteers out there and they're not people who are raising families. There are people who have done that but are, you know, wanting to serve in our community. We are very blessed. With those people who are willing to do that. But, you know, realizing that the pandemic would cause death and spreading it. We took some precautions to prevent that from happening. So historically. I'm well aware that, you know, we had a very limited supply. Of nonprofit organizations to reach out to, to really do some, you know, life-threatening frontline work. They as essential workers, providing those services. And so, you know, it became really challenging to do all the work that was done in Project Room Key to, you know, to do the meals. To check in on vulnerable people who are sick. These are people that have been out in the street. Unattended to, who didn't have access to healthcare. Who didn't have, you know, regular meals, so emaciated, who have mental illness, who have substance use issues. Just a number of conditions because they've been unsheltered for many years. And we took really quick advantage of obtaining a couple of hotels and. You know, because we were so quick and I'm, you know, very grateful for the motel owners for allowing for us to be able to take advantage of this opportunity. So that we can establish shelter. And that in itself provided safety for our community. It prevented the spread of COVID within Sacramento. It is a huge step that preserved. From getting many other residents sick by sheltering people who could have spread that illness to all of us. They could be hanging around grocery stores. And as we know, just a sneeze or a cough, as we know, it was a huge, you know, shift of human behavior to put on a mask and. You know, there are months where, you know, people didn't even have masks. So now I can notice that, you know, many people are wearing masks, but it's still a shift, a culture shift to, you know, to do what it takes to spread COVID. And also sanitation, you know, places where people that are in sheltered can wash and cleanse themselves. So we're still, I still feel we're behind. I still feel we have a workload. I still feel as we've seen. Yesterday, a death of a woman at a bus shelter. And I am fearful of people that are still in shelter, that we are not doing enough. And where I asked, you know, for an internal review of our process to address homelessness and making sure that. Vulnerable women and individuals are sheltered immediately. And I know that Project Room Key has been so successful. Which is now being converted to Project Home Key where we have a waitlist. And so now that we see more funding with the governor. And more funding at the federal level, a miraculous amount of money at the federal level and, you know, what was put out by now President Biden, I'm so excited. To purchase motels, same thing. So I just want to say that with that, you know, I want to continue our success because maintaining that track record. Will give us the leverage to be able to get more funding to shelter people. I think it's imperative that we find that opportunity here for West Sacramento. I do see a hand raised. We did close the public comment for this particular item, but we have a couple of other items that could be, we will open up public comment again for those particular items. But I just want to say that. This is a huge undertaking for our staff. And for all of our organizations that stepped in, you know, even, you know, volunteers who were delivering burritos or. Purchased meals where I saw they were purchasing meals in our restaurants and so that. saw they were purchasing meals in our restaurants. And so that helped our economy to be able to purchase meals for our unsheltered, just the people opened up their wallets and their hearts, and all pitched in to help people. So, you know, it was a citywide community effort, which I'm very grateful for. And, but I still feel we have a long ways to go. So with that, I think we can put that back in the consent agenda, and as a modified, you know, proposal, which I'm understanding is where we can do that for this particular. I want to ask the city attorney if that's okay, that for this item. So we can put that on the consent agenda as a modi-
Yeah, as modified.
Thank you. So we'll move on to the next item, and the consideration of agreement for services with the Yolo County Children's Alliance for Case Management Supportive Services for the Home Key Program at the roadway end. Councilmember Orozco.
Sorry, Madam Mayor, I actually just spoke on that matter.
Oh, is it? You did? Oh, sorry. Okay. So then you have item, which is in our book, item 16, consideration of agreement for services with the Mercy Coalition of West Sacramento for food distribution and laundry services for the Home Key Program at the roadway end. Councilmember Orozco.
Thank you. And is it fair to assume, Madam Mayor, that the modification to the previous contract with YCCA would necessarily apply to Mercy Coalition and shortening the term to one year?
I believe so. That's what the city manager said.
Yeah, I think that it would make sense on the same basis to make them both one-year initial terms with the added direction, as Councilmember Alcala had motion, to do an RFQ process for, they're different services, so we would, we would tailor the RFQs accordingly. We, I suppose it would also give us the opportunity to look at combining those services as well. So for that reason, I would say do the same on both of the contracts.
Mercy, thank you. Well, I have nothing but great things to say about Mercy Coalition, just the same. And I know I could speak for some, at least one of my colleagues, when I say that, you know, that we've worked with the organization on several different projects, whether it be the winter warming centers, or other projects that are there to provide food services for people who are experiencing homelessness in our city. My experience with the organization has largely been through the West Sac Kids Give Back Program, and just recently, you know, providing the delivery to, to the group who disperses a lot of what our local children do to, you know, outreach to our, our homeless community. I did a same analysis on, on the budget request here. And, you know, one of the, the benefits of, well, let me rephrase that. One of the concerns I had had initially was that, you know, th- this is a totally different set of services. This is, right, mentioned in YCCA initially, that the, the scope of services was more so for the case management and assisting folks to, to move into more of a self-sufficient state. This is a different, you know, set of, of, of services, such as, you know, laundry service and, and food service and whatnot. What I had wanted to see is, I wanted to see a little bit more information about, like, just more specifics. Ultimately, I, I had ideas when I looked at this, for example, for laundry services, and how we could really maximize an investment there. For example, we're paying, say, $11,000 for Love Laundry to do laundry services. But could there have been any corollary opportunities where, say, for example, there were people who were in the program who needed employment? And in, in the same fashion, what is the downtown streets team model is, you know, folks can participate in getting job readiness skills, and/or participating in ways that would, you know, be more of like a cooperative agreement with, and these would be for people who have the ability to do that. I mean, obviously, we wouldn't require anyone to do it. But it would provide fantastic opportunities for folks to, say, deliver meals, or to do laundry, and, and maybe give folks the opportunity to re-enter a workforce-like set of responsibilities. And, and I think that's a win-win when you come to an investment such as this. I, I wanted a little bit more detail, just in the same fashion, I scrutinized YCCA, and I asked for a little bit more detail as to what it is that the line items would be purchasing, because I, I want to make sure that every one of our dollars is being accounted for. And I think, in this case, I, I, you know, we have a year to, to do this. What I want to see, though, is that, I know a lot of these services are very much limited, they're COVID-related. For example, we're saying laundry services, and why do we do laundry services? We do that because folks, we don't want to encourage folks to get out of their rooms, and to go laundromat, and to wash their, their clothes, and therefore, they're, they're more exposed, and they may be exposing others. So I, I can accept that. However, if, in fact, the public health order does relax, and we're allowed to do more, and there are people that have the capability of doing more, I would like to see that we reconsider, you know, maybe some of these, maybe not the food, but maybe other aspects of this contract. Because I, I wouldn't want to see someone who had, you know, it was perfectly safe to go out there, and to do your laundry, then we all have the ability, if we have the ability to do that, we, we should. And then perhaps maybe use the money on, on food, or maybe expanded services for folks that, you know, could also enjoy them, or maybe just a little bit more, you know, in-depth work with certain folks that are almost at the cusp of, of maybe landing a job or permanent housing or whatnot. So again, I want this program to succeed. I love the initiative from all the organizations that, that move forward, and all the work that they've done in, in West Sacramento. I want to make sure that we have measurable outcomes, and that we know at the end of this term that we've done what we needed to do in order to prove that this investment was, was a positive one for our community. And so, you know, raising the bar, and, and holding our organizations accountable for, you know, for results, but also knowing that, you know, also appreciating the work that they do. So with that, Madam Mayor, that's, that's my comments.
Thank you. Any other comments? Mr. Huerta, do you have any comments for this?
Yeah, just, just one. Councilmember Orozco mentioned that she would like to see some involvement of, of some of the program participants. So I did have a chance to have a conversation with the Mercy Coalition, and they did note that one of the staff that they have listed as part of the, the services that they will be provided, the halftime staff, they are looking into hiring somebody who is currently a client at the Home Key Program. So that is being considered, and that may well be a possibility. So I, I hope that addresses at least some of the concerns. I know that you had some other ones, but, you know, we are working on, on addressing a lot of those concerns. It's, we're still in an unknown area. You know, hopefully, we, I think we all hope that this pandemic will go away very soon, but we don't know when that's going to happen. So, again, giving us that initial time period to figure out what services we will need beyond this COVID period will really allow us to, to make those changes to the structure of the program, and, and get additional services, modify the services that we are requesting when we come back to the council, you know, before that initial 12-month period ends.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Orozco.
Thank you. Thank you, Raul. I appreciate that feedback. And I just want to clarify, I'm not, I don't want to require anyone to do anything. I just think that where we have an investment like this, and there's an opportunity for, for us to get a double win out of it, and create, you know, opportunities for folks. I mean, these simple things like, again, food delivery, or they're just small responsibilities that someone might be able to, you know, gain from that investment. So I do appreciate that, that feedback, and, you know, looking forward to what Mercy can deliver for us, as well as YCCA. Thank you.
Thank you. And I wanted to, yes, Councilmember Ledezma, go ahead.
Thank you. I just wanted, on this and the previous item, just thank both those organizations for stepping up to the plate well before Home Key, Home Key was of reality for us. And I think I don't want to belabor the point, the fact of how we got to this place, which I think every one of the council members up through the previous council to, to this, three members of the council that were on it, we're all rooting for this in our own ways, and the benefits it would bring. And, and having organizations with folks in our city, our neighbors, who, who have stepped up throughout the year to provide services for, for these folks. It's heroic, nothing less. And we should, we're lucky to have them in our, in our, in our community, ready to step up to the plate. This is, this is a case too. Mayor, as you know, getting the state money for this was, was a battle. And we, we, we made a commitment to the cit, to the state for these funds, to be ready to go when, and be ready to open in a short time. And we hold tight to those commitments. And this is an area where we had community members step up, step in. They were already providing the service, they were already friends and neighbors, and were, were delivering burritos and everything else. That was terrific. And now we have the opportunity to continue that service. So I just want to say thank you to all them. Raul, and everybody else, thank you for working as heroically to get this in place. And that's the bottom line, is the fact that the state wanted communities like ours to step up, and we did. And that's, these are things we do, and what has made our community special for a long time. So thanks, Raul. Thanks, staff.
Thank you, Councilmember Ledezma. And if there are no other comments, I'd like to open it up for public comment. Madam Clerk, are there any public requests for public comment? We have three minutes for each individual.
Yes, we have Desiree Rojas.
Um, I, thank you, Mayor. And I, I would like to say thank you very much for the other city council members' comments. But I really want to thank City Councilmember Alcala. I really believe that her question is very much in line with transparency. And I'm positive that both of these organizations have done angelic work. But history tells us that in, in budgeting in our cities, and with taxpayers, property taxes increasing, and people losing jobs, and small businesses going under, transparency in the assessment of knowing what small businesses could provide services that would put community members, taxpayers of West Sacramento, back to work, is also very important. So her question actually opens up the door to other questions. When we talk about the bidding process, we're talking about abiding by the state, federal rules and regulations to be transparent. I don't think she is saying that, you know, she's not celebrating these two organizations. I believe she is. But it's her role, like all of your role, is to be transparent, and to make sure that we're doing the right thing. I, I own a home, I, in, in, in West Sacramento. I have a lot of family who live in West Sacramento, some of them in small businesses, from tile setters to, to babysitters, farmworkers, to very small businesses, beauticians on wheels. The point that I'm making is that I think it's important for West Sacramento to develop this small business listing, to know in their universe who is in West Sacramento, and who can also provide some of these services to get people back to work. The pandemic is obviously very new to this generation. But historically, we have lived through the chickenpox, measles, the, the malaria pandemics as well, and we got through that. But what we have learned is that when we're expecting an economic crisis, like we're expecting soon, we need to understand how to mimic such programs like Delancey Street in San Francisco, of putting people back to work that are also victims of circumstances. So I just want to say that I appreciate Councilmember Alcala's question. It opens up the door for future discussions and to be better prepared.
Thank you. And I think there are no more other comments at this point. Correct, Madam Clerk?
You are correct, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. So we will close the public comment, bring it back to council. Are there any other comments? No? Okay. Just want to applaud Mercy Coalition for their commitment to serve our community. They have been an organization that I've recognized, who has been the most successful in finding housing for our unsheltered guests, permanent housing, utilizing their warming center program with the most, you know, low-cost overhead, because it's predominantly volunteers, you know, combination of the faith-based community, and all those that are serving, to make sure that we're doing, you know, we're doing everything we can to serve our community. And so with that, they've been very successful, and I am just very grateful they're coming back. I know it was tough during the pandemic, is, is they were impacted pretty hard. So they're coming back and continuing to deliver the services. And I know that Councilmember Orozco's recommendations will be taken to heart, because that's, that's how they are. And we'll continue to work with each council member, as they've always had. You know, Councilmember Alcala, you're new, you know, and looking at some of, you know, the Mercy Coalition. But last year, they opened their doors during the Winter Warming Center, where they showed their unique relationship in working with individuals that, that have been unhoused on the streets, victimized, you know, just really traumatized by the experience on the streets. And their nurturing, empathetic compassion has melted their minds and hearts to receive support, which can be a major uphill battle and the challenge. And through that, you know, their, their volunteer base has really helped bridge them to housing. And so with that, I'm just very grateful for them coming back, and looking forward to working with them, meeting them out there, maybe going on a laundry run with them, helping out, you know. They're always asking for volunteers. And during interviewing with applicants, I'm going to be sending a few volunteers your way, you know, to the Mercy Coalition, because there are a lot of people who still want to find more ways to help out in these efforts in our community. So just want to thank them. So with that, I'm going to wrap this up, and would like to consider a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Madam Mayor, if I can make a quick comment on this item?
Yes, you may. Councilmember Ledezma?
Thank you. I'm trying to make sure I have the right agenda item. Item 19, the Bees Lake Habitat.
You wanted to pull item 19. Sorry, did you pull item?
I, I just want to make a comment on it.
Oh, sure. Go ahead.
Thank you. So just thank you to staff and everybody that worked on the Bees Lake Habitat. I don't want to let this one go without giving everybody thank you. I know we are the plan and design around Bees Lake. We've had in front of us before. This is a beloved place in our community, with a long history, and to see it move forward, and so that getting past the study was a big step. So I just want to recognize staff for all, all the hard work on that. Thank you.
Great. Then thank you, Councilmember Ledezma, for that recognition, because they have worked really hard for a long time. So, okay, now we will go back to approving the consent agenda. Accept a motion.
Moved with amendments.
Second.
Councilmember Orozco moved. Councilmember Ledezma second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Alcala?
Aye.
Councilmember Ledezma?
Aye.
Councilmember Orozco?
Aye.
And Mayor Guerrero?
Aye. Okay, that's been approved. We will now move to our regular agenda item number 23, consideration of resolution 21-12 of the City Council, of the City of West Sacramento, calling for a special all-male ballot election on August 31st, 2021, and requesting Yolo County Elections to provide election services, or in the alternative consideration of filling vacancy by appointment. And we will have our city manager, Assistant City Manager, present on this item. And we also have present with us the Yolo County Elections, the Ace, Jesse Salvin, just to answer any questions. Go ahead, City Manager.
Okay, thank you. I'll just be giving a short introduction to this item, because I know we'll likely have many people who would like to make public comments. So it's really just a recap, the direction of the council from the last meeting. Over the last couple of months, as you know, we've worked to lay out options you have as a council to fill the vacancy. The council had a spirited debate on this topic the last meeting. Each of your positions were made very clear. And it was clear to staff that there was not agreement about a path forward for making an appointment. So now with that, I, I do feel it's important to stay here tonight, that I know each of you well enough to know that there are plenty of issues for which the council shares common values, and where accord and compromise is going to be the norm, and, and will lead the outcomes. We can't expect agreement all the time, but I know there's alignment on most issues this council faces, and there's common core values about our city. And I know, even when there's strong agreement among this body, Jeff, Amanda, and I, and dozens of other staff members are here to give you objective advice and good information, help you make decisions. So that's our role. So that's our role. But on this item, we haven't seen a consensus among the council. So we provided you with information about the remaining options to fill the seat through a special election. We ultimately received direction from the council to take that path forward at the conclusion of the last meeting. And so we've returned this evening with the requisite resolution to follow through on that direction. So Resolution 21-12 will call a special election to be held by all-male balloting on August 31st, 2021. The winner of that election will serve the remaining term of the vacant council seat, which is through November of 2022. As the mayor mentioned, we have the chief elections official, among many other important roles in Yolo County, Jesse Salinas, want to thank him for joining us. He'll be available along with staff to answer questions about the process for the election. I'll also note that since the last meeting, Mr. Salinas's office provided us with a cost estimate for a special election in August. That cost estimate is $157,000 to cover the city's costs for that election services. We were also provided a draft timeline of key dates leading up to that date. And so if the council approves the resolution tonight, we'll get working with Jesse's office on that process. And that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So I will bring it to council for discussion. We've had, we have had a spirited discussion already on this particular item. And I so far just see six individuals requesting to speak on public comment. So, well, the number keeps going up. So I just would like to allow for public comment as well to be taken, to provide some time for that public comment. It's exciting that we have an opportunity to engage with the community today. And so with that, I just want to make sure that we have that opportunity and then come back to council for further discussion and then move to establish a motion or recommendation for our city staff. So with that, among council members, would you like to speak now or would you like to wait until after public comment?
Madam Mayor, I'm fine speaking after public comment.
Okay. All right, everybody. So we will now move to public comment. I only see 16 at this point, so I will allow three minutes each. And I will have our city clerk give you a warning at the 30-second mark when you can then, if you can wrap it up at that point. Thank you.
I'm going to unmute and mute the person who's going to speak. Username Chica, Latin, Grand Rehearsal. Please go ahead. I'm going to call in the next person. Ray E.
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you. Go ahead.
Yes, hi. Thank you very much for having me. So I want to, I know this is a spirited discussion. So there's a couple of things that I want to bring up. Comment specifically to city council members Orozco and Ledesma, and then a comment on what's been happening, the comments that we've been hearing from voters in the West Sac discussion group. First and foremost, I would like to ask councilmembers Ledesma and Orozco why we are not district seating yet. We have Davis and Woodland in districts, but not us. The reason why I'm asking you is because you've been on city council for the past, what, four to six years? And we haven't seen that. Is there a reason for that? Did you vote for it? Did you vote against it? And if we're not there yet, could this have been avoided to where we don't know who this, who our next council member is, and we're not waiting for our mayor to give her input on what she wants to do? Also, I would like to quote a friend of mine, Mitchell Deanda. I'm friends with him, and this is what he said, and he put it quite well. He says, "Cabaldin himself, in a lengthy letter to city employees, emphasized the necessity of a stable majority on the council with a shared vision in order to make progress. Appointing Dr. Early would make the impossible and would effectively ensure that the council is not able to progress in a new direction, which is what voters clearly wanted in electing Martha Guerrero, the mayor." If, and also too, Dr. Early didn't finish second. She finished third. And also, I want to say this, we're not in ranked choice voting. So that's not how the city operates. I also want to comment on an article by Marcos Breton that he highlighted Dr. Early. And there was actually a comment in there that says, "A notable exception is electing a black person to West Sacramento City Council. It's never happened before." With all due respect, we have four Latinos on the city council. The fact that that was overlooked, that that's been overlooked, is kind of insulting to the city of West Sacramento. And I'm only bringing that up because I know some other speakers may bring up her race and who she is. Dr. Early may be very well qualified, but she obviously doesn't have the agenda that people want to vote for her. So we voted for Martha Guerrero and what her platform is, and I strongly suggest that we go in the direction that the voters wanted. And if not, if Dr. Early wants to vote, wants to run in August, and she wins, so be it. But that's my thoughts. Thank you very much.
Next, we have Sheila Johnston.
Thank you. Good evening, city council members. My name is Sheila Johnston, and I am a resident of West Sacramento. I also ran for city council in the 2018 general election. I strongly disagree with the recommendation to place the third-place candidate, Dr. Dante Early, as city council member. When I voted, I voted for the top two candidates I wish to see in office because that was the question and those were the rules. I was not asked to vote for three candidates. For the city council to assume that I would want the third-place candidate to fill the vacancy on council is presumptuous and wrong. The council cannot change the rules after the fact. Doing so removes my complete trust in the process of voting and the process of representation and my trust in council. You have not been authorized to place the third-place candidate as a council member to represent the entire city of West Sacramento. The way you can earn my trust is to either hold an appointment selection process to fill the vacant position or hold a special election. To me, I don't have faith that you will have consensus in anything but a two-two vote for any applicant wishing to seek appointment to council. Therefore, the only reasonable solution I see is to hold a special election. Now, I understand that there is a cost associated with the special election, but isn't the cost of earning trust priceless? West Sacramento needs to rebuild the division that has existed between political camps, between individuals that represented West Sacramento and alienated a vast portion of beliefs. And the only way that can be done is to let the people vote. My beliefs are not about political posturing. It is simply about moving forward with trust. It's been said before, but it's worth repeating. The essence of good government is trust. You owe it to our beautiful city to earn and keep the trust of the residents who live here and believe that government is good, that government is representative, that government is fair. Thank you.
Next, we have Anna Domek.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, thanks. Thank you all for listening to public comments today in this meeting. My name is Anna, and I'm a West Sacramento resident. This morning, we got to see the first woman in person of color and operated as vice president in our country's history. What a beautiful history-making moment for our country and for little girls like mine to witness. History right here in West Sacramento. My appointment of Dr. Dante Early to the city council would be our first black city council member. I've heard repeatedly that doesn't matter, but also it does matter since we've never had that population have representation. It could be our first black city council member on a female-led, wonderfully diverse council that could be an example to the region and to my daughter. Additionally, Dr. Early has a very high level of community support. She earned 8,123 community members' votes in the election that just happened. And those votes are more important than any petition or even public comments like my own tonight. That 0.25% difference between the third and second-place finisher should not stand in the way of our city having access to her talents when there is now a third seat open so soon after the last election. Dr. Early's wealth of experience and involvement in our community, coupled with her background in mental and public health, make her the best person for this job. As I've mentioned, we can make history tonight. You all have the power. You could appoint Dr. Early and bring together a diverse team to lead our city. You could ensure representation for a population that has not had representation before on our city council. And representation does matter. You can also provide our city with a crucial fifth member on the city council to make sure all voices are heard. If Dr. Early will not be the choice of this council, I really would not, would prefer not to watch someone else picked by three or four city council members over a woman who got the fourth-largest vote total in our city history. I do ask if that could not be agreed upon, that we go to a special election, as was discussed in the last city council meeting, so the voices of voters, like myself and many others, thousands of others in our city, can be honored. Thank you so much for listening to public comments tonight.
Next, we have Mary Ann.
Yes, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Thank you. My name is Mary Ann Essis. I have been a resident of West Sacramento, Broderick specifically, the north area, for over 50 years. And I'm asking that you take action tonight in support of appointing Dr. Dante Early to the vacant city council seat. Not only would it be friskily prudent, but it would also enable you to function as a full council and focus on important city matters for which you were elected. For example, this evening, you seem to be short of members to assign to all the various committees. If you had a full council, that would have made an easier thing for everybody on the council. Also, spending any additional time on the application process or a late summer election is completely unnecessary. What's more important is to recognize the votes of 8,123 residents. Any outside influences should not interfere or overshadow our local democracy. You know, there's also some notion that because the mayor was elected, that she runs the city. Actually, we have five members to run the city. And truth be told, if you're looking at number of votes, Councilmember Orozco commanded more votes than our mayor. So it kind of defeats the logic that the city voted for her vision alone. That is simply not true. So what I'm asking is that you allow democracy to prevail in West Sacramento, just as it is in our nation. Thank you.
Next, we have Scott Rafferty.
Good evening. Another at-large election would not only cost $157,000, it would be illegal and could result in even more costly legal challenges. The candidate the two council members are demanding would be the third to live off Marshall Avenue. District elections are needed to prevent this imbalance and to guarantee representation from every part of the city. Now is not the time to spend city funds in court in a doomed attempt to defend an illegal system that needs to change. Let's also be clear that Dr. West was on a slate that lost a close but decisive election. She was placed on that slate not by any minority community, but by a mayor whom the people of West Sacramento decided to change after two decades. She was promoted by mailers that used Democratic Party logos without authorization, and still she lost. To appoint her after she lost undoes the will of the people and denies the new mayor an opportunity to succeed. There needs to be a transition of power in West Sacramento, just like in Washington. This new appointment should not be used to create a majority in permanent opposition to the newly-elected mayor. The lengths at which Member Orozco, meeting after meeting, has repeated her demand that no one else be considered except Dr. West makes clear that this is her goal. It's rare for four council members to reach immediate consensus on a single person to fill a vacancy, especially after vigorously contested election. That's why there needs to be an open application process, and there is plenty of time. Folsom had 39 citizens step up in just 72 hours after a vacancy occurred last year. West Sacramento has at least as many highly qualified citizens willing and able to serve. Perhaps some are totally unacceptable to the two members who support Dr. West, and those will not be appointed. But it is an insult every potential candidate and to the entire city to suggest that no one in West Sacramento is willing and capable of working with both sides. Mayor Guerrero stands ready to leave. West Sacramento doesn't need seven more months where every vote is just as headlocked as this decision. That's why vacancies elections are so rare, even when they are legal. The people expect you to appoint and to get to work. The voters made a decision for new leadership last November. Respect that decision by appointing a fifth member to complete the council so that you can all work together. Thank you.
Mr. Rafferty? Next is Karen Zanotto.
Hi, thank you for giving me the chance to speak tonight. I really appreciate having my voice heard by the council. I heard someone say just a few minutes ago that she didn't think it was fair for the city council to appoint the third-place vote-getter, but that she thought having the four members of council appoint somebody else that they selected from an application process was more fair. I have to respectfully disagree with that. I think the opposite is true. The citizens of West Sacramento voted overwhelmingly in support of Dr. West. Yes, she got third place, so she didn't get a seat. But over 8,000 residents of West Sacramento said that they wanted her to be their city council member. I think we, the mayor campaigned on listening to her constituents. And I would hope that she and the rest of the council respects the 8,000 votes that Dr. West received during the election as proof that the citizens of West Sacramento support her appointment to that position. I also would love to see an African-American woman be appointed to the council. I appreciate that the council is overwhelmingly Latino and that minorities are represented in our city. But to not have a black person ever be a member of the city council, I think the council would be doing a great disservice to the city if she was not appointed. She is very qualified, which the voters agreed with by giving her more than 8,000 votes. And I think she would be an asset to the city. If the council cannot agree to appoint her, I think that the fair alternative is to have a special election rather than four members deciding what they think is best for the city without voter input. Thank you for your time.
Next, we have Justine. Justine, go ahead.
Hello? Oh, sorry, there I am. Hi, thank you for having this opportunity for us to comment. I would just like to say that I'm in favor of appointing Dante. I feel that she put herself forward, just like the other candidates that ran in the election, which is seen as a very transparent process. There's this conversation of having transparency and that supposedly an application process would provide some sort of extra transparency that the election process apparently didn't provide, which I think is kind of not the right way to describe the application process that would be utilized by only a handful of people. So I would like to agree that the will of the voters, which showed that over 8,100 people agree that Dante would be a great candidate and would do well to serve our community, would be a good, a good direction for the council to appoint her instead of going to a special election. But I agree, if there is no consensus, that the most transparent process would be to go to the special election and to give people, the voters, the opportunity again to vote, to confirm who they want to see to fill that fifth seat, the vacancy. I also feel that the application process actually won't be sufficient because previous special meetings that have been on this topic has yielded discussion that tend to lean towards a conversation of unions trying to vet applicants in that proposed process, which I don't feel is a sufficient. which I don't feel is a sufficient aspect. Unions or representative people like that are, everyone chip their one singular vote versus a union coming in and saying like, if we like this person or not. So again, I am apprehensive about moving forward with the application process that will not truly reflect the will of the voters. And again, the unique aspect of this situation is that the last few times there were vacancies, it was not connected to an election. So we have this opportunity to relay what the will of voters want based on the election that we just had. Again, 89 vote difference between the second candidate and the third candidate. So again, I just want to say that I think Dante would be a good candidate, and I agree with Councilmember Ledisma and Orozco in their opinion of how they would like to pursue filling that vacancy. Thank you very much.
Your next is Andrew Domick.
Hi. My comment today is in support of appointing Dr. Dante Early to the vacant seat on the city council. You all know her qualifications, or you should, but I'll just highlight one big one that I find extremely relevant today. Dr. Early is a public health expert and a mental health expert, and we are in the middle of a pandemic. Those are exactly the skills we need right now. I mean, we couldn't have asked for a better candidate right now to be appointed and start making decisions on behalf of the city, and those should take precedent over whatever old resentments and current politics that people can't just get past. Further, if a fair, transparent, and democratic result is the true aim of this process, then listening to the voices of those 8,123 West Sacramento voters seems to me to be the fairest scenario. And frankly, the claim that we somehow need to listen to voices of those that don't vote or didn't vote for a candidate would seem to question the need for elections at all. It just doesn't make any sense. Look, we just had an election, 80% voter turnout, and Dr. Early won the fourth highest vote total for a city council candidate in West Sacramento's history. She's been vetted by the voices of our voters, and that's the only vetting that should matter. In either of the two other options available to fill the council seat, accepting applications and appointing someone else, or holding a special election likely to feature a lower turnout, the end result will be the same. Fewer West Sacramento voices will be heard. You either trust the voters of West Sacramento, or you don't. Those are your choices. And while I've heard plenty of arguments against the appointment of Dr. Early, they certainly have absolutely nothing to do with transparency, fairness, or democracy. This is a unique situation that calls for a uniquely qualified candidate like Dr. Early. And if that, if she can't be appointed to this seat, then I really look forward to a special election. And thank you all for your time.
Thank you. Next is Candace Newman.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, thank you. Hi, my name is Candace Newman, and I am speaking tonight in support of the council appointing Dr. Dante Early West to the vacant city council seat. As many have already mentioned, we just had an election. There was historic turnout, and Dr. Early West received almost the same amount of votes as Councilwoman Alcala. She, she has been vetted by West Sacramento's community, and they have deemed her qualified. And I would like to note that we've talked about her education, we've talked about her role in public health, and the idea that she is going to follow along with anyone else and not think for herself, I think, is wrong. It's just, it's just wrong. She will make the decisions that she believes are best for the entire community of West Sacramento. And you have mentioned that some did not vote for her, but that is also true of the other members sitting on this council. Some did not vote for Mayor Guerrero, but I would like to believe that she works to serve the entire community, not only those who voted for her. And I believe it would be a very wonderful unifying step to appoint Dr. Early West to demonstrate that this council does truly wish to represent all the voters. But I also believe that if we have to waste the money on a special election, and as someone who just volunteered many, 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 many hours working on a campaign for the school district to raise some much-needed money, this amount of money is, it's hurtful, but if that's what we need to do, I believe that it will simply serve to read that Dr. Early West has a mandate from the people to serve our community on the city council. She will be elected and serve our community if it comes to that. It would just be a shame if that service has to be delayed until the end of August or later. Thank you very much for your time.
Next is Ron Price.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. This is Ron Price. I don't understand the reason for a special election or an application. I don't understand the benefit. Why should any other applicants be accepted after the election of the council seat that was held in November the 3rd, less, just a little more than 60 days ago? What do we want, a do-over, and for whom? The person who forgot to apply before the November election? Or the person who lost their application and couldn't submit it by the due date? In any case, I personally do not want a council member who's a Johnny come lately or who wants the position as an afterthought. I want a council member who is thoughtful, decisive, and timely. We have that person in Dr. Early. She applied, she was vetted, and approved by over 8,000 voters in a true democratic and transparent process, with the third highest vote count for the third available council seat. Appointing Dr. Early would avoid the appearance of collusion or favoritism by a selection committee. Appointing Dr. Early would give the council an immediate majority vote without waiting seven months in a possible gridlock until the August election. And thank you, fellow commenter who mentioned that the committee assignments could be better distributed with a fifth member. Appointing Dr. Early would save the city $157,000 plus staff costs to oversee and manage the process. Appointing Dr. Early would avoid candidates having to solicit money and spend funds for a special election and to spend more money for the November 2022 election 15 months later. Appointing Dr. Early would set a precedent should this happen again in 2022. If the mayor is challenged by a council member in that election and a council seat is open, this could have been avoided with a little forethought. And I ask you again, and nobody has told me, what the benefit is of a special election or an application process? Thank you.
Next we have Danny.
Hi, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Hi, good evening, Mayor Guerrero and members of the council. I want to first thank you for the opportunity to do live public comment. It's a great way to get public feedback and to show that you are listening to constituent voices. My name is Danny Theracol. I'm speaking today in regards to item 23. And first say that two weeks ago, I submitted a petition calling for application appointment process to fill the vacant seat on city council. At the time, the petition had approximately 180 signatures. Today, that petition stands at 461 signatures. It's clear an appointment is most favored, and it seems like it's what the public wants, and it's what the city council wants, based on previous meetings. A special election is just way too costly for our city. But all that I and the 461 petitioners are asking for is that you open that application process so that any eligible West Sacramento resident can apply. An open process helps keep things fair for people who didn't have a chance to run for office, who don't have the money or resources to do so, but are still involved in the community and want to serve our city. You know, this process engages the public to not only speak up about issues important to them, but give them a chance to be part of the solution. The last few city council meetings, Dr. Early has been mentioned as a possible candidate to fill the vacancy. And while arguments for her appointment hold some validity, to move forward with such a, first opening the process up would mean silencing members of the community from being engaged, silencing the public from speaking up about important topics, and deny the best, most qualified candidate possible that our city has to offer. We wouldn't know unless we open up that process up. I myself would apply for the vacancy if given the option. I would welcome the opportunity to face this council and talk about some of those issues facing our city and what or how I can help solve them. And I know I'm not the only resident in our city that feels the same way, based on this petition itself. There is no harm in inviting the public to apply and participate. Dr. Early herself has said that she would apply if that is the choice of this council. So I ask again to please open up this process and welcome the public to submit their name and take part in this process and show them what each of us have, our experiences and our qualifications, to show what we have for our city and how we can be involved. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is.
Sorry, madam clerk, we couldn't hear you. Who's the next one?
Sabrina Lockhart.
Okay.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor and council members, for the opportunity to comment. And more specifically, I really appreciate the opportunity for the public to actively participate in your meetings for the first time in almost a year since the pandemic began. I submitted a letter to council of more details, and I thank those of you who chose to respond. In the interest of a fair, open, and transparent process, I urge the council to approve an application process to fill the remainder of this seat. This vacancy was created because voters chose new leadership for mayor. This is not an open seat from the most recent election. It's Mayor Guerrero's council seat that she won in 2018. I also just wanted to point out that comparing vote that a mayor receives versus a council member isn't accurate because voters are allowed to choose two people for city council and one vote for mayor. So I just wanted to point out that discrepancy. I also disagree that this year's campaign allowed for full public participation because of the pandemic. There weren't the usual public events to meet candidates and to have conversations about their reasons for seeking public office. I relied solely on my own due diligence to research the candidates. And I support an open application process because that's what's been done in the past for vacancies in the middle of a term, and it's precisely what the school board is doing right now to fill the vacancy of Councilmember Alcala's seat on the school board. I voted for Dr. Early and Councilmember Alcala, and if the outcome were reversed, I would still respect the appointment process. You have the opportunity to make this a robust process and engage public participation. None of this would prevent Dr. Early from participating. I urge you to be creative in finding consensus. A special election will cost taxpayers while delaying the city's work with a divided council. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Lamils Garrett. We can come back to you. Ryan Haberson.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I decided to speak because I keep hearing this narrative that I think presents a logical inconsistency, and it has to do with the large voter turnout and the votes for Dante Early, which I was one of those votes, but in the election, there were essentially two choices on the ballot for city council member. And what if there was a third? Would the candidates have behaved differently? Would the voters behave differently? I believe they would have, you know? I've been hearing rumblings that Joe Dianda might run in the special election if we had one. Joe Dianda, born and bred West Sacramento, you know, what would it look like if he had have chose to run if there were three options on the table? We don't know, you know? We don't know what the voter mandate was with regard to a third applicant, so I think there's a logical inconsistency to say, you know, the will of the voters wanted Dante Early to be appointed, even though that was not a consideration during the election. And we need to recognize that. In the best case here, the most democratic solution here would be to have the special election. Understanding that it is costly and it might be fiscally imprudent, I think we should fall back on tradition, which is to hold that application process. And, you know, a lot of folks might have read in the press that I was, was, I had an interest, you know? Well, my interest was in electing Dante Early. I actually voted for her. I held a fundraiser for her. I support her. But again, if there were three options on the table, I don't know where my support would have been. Now, with this presentation of options and the application process, I do think now, you know, we're logistically out of time. And so really, the decision should have been made at the last meeting. It wasn't, and now we are logistically out of time. And so the special election here is the best choice, the most democratic choice, and we'll see who runs and we'll see who wins. Thank you.
Thank you. Are you ready? Lamils Garrett?
Yes.
Thank you.
Hello, my name's Lamils Garrett with the Sacramento NA, or the Greater Sacramento NAACP, and I'm calling on, to bring support towards the decision for filling the council seat with Dr. Dante Early West. West Sacramento City Council is facing a decision to fill an open city council seat. The facts of the situation overwhelmingly support Dr. Dante Early's direct appointment. Doing so would be good governance, meaning fair and equitable, financially responsible, and a model of inclusion. West Sacramento City Council has the choice of making an appointment or holding a special election to fill the vacant seat. The appointment can be immediate of known aspirants. The city council can choose, can also choose to appoint following a process that includes applications and interviews. In this case, a process of application and interview seems unnecessary considering the time constraints, as well as an obviously qualified candidate already vetted by the public, Dr. Early. A special election costs the taxpayers at least $150,000, and there will be an election in 2022 for that seat, giving the taxpayers another direct voice on candidates in less than two years. The vacant seat, which became open with Mayor Martha Guerrero being elected mayor in November 2020 and subsequently vacated in her city, her city council seat. In that same election, there were two contested city council seats. Councilwoman Orozco was elected with 11,615 votes. Councilwoman Alcala was elected with 8,212 votes. The remaining candidates were Dr. Early, Dwayne Wilson, and Jason Trimster. Dr. Early doubled the vote of the next two candidates who came for. For anything moving forward, she's the only person who would be considered in an application process if that were to happen, who actually had the bravery to expose herself, be vetted by the voters, and that happened in the most recent election. There's been several discussions about the, a special election being an opportunity to cast a wide opportunity for voters to participate. However, what's not been mentioned is, is special elections typically draws a far smaller vote count than a general election, as was the case that just happened less than two months ago. There's usually a, a large discrepancy. Additionally, with the special election, you're essentially talking about paying $2.80 per taxpayer or nearly $20 per voter for a process that will give you far fewer voters likely than a process that already identified the support for Dr. Early just a few months ago. On behalf of the Sacramento NAACP, if we simply look at qualifications, if we look at all things outside of race, Dr. Early clearly has established herself as a clear candidate.
Thank you, Mr. Garrett.
And if we look at equity, please consider Dr. Early. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Jennifer Perez, next.
Hi, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor Guerrero and council members. I am taking a timeout this evening to call in and voice up my support of appointing Dr. Dante Early West. I think the election proved that voters would like to see Dr. Early on the council. I don't see how anyone can say that appointing Dr. Early has not, has not been a transparent process, and in my opinion, she has been vetted through the, the election process that the candidates went through, and it's been so recent. I don't understand why Mayor Guerrero and Councilmember Alcala are so against this option. Do they not believe that, that the 8,123 people that voted for Dr. Early West had any kind of validation towards it? I just... I just, I don't understand why this has been such a a standstill here. It seems like an obvious choice. And I just believe that having an application process would take up extra time and would leave it up to four members versus, you know, the will of what just happened in the election, the will of the voters. Lastly, I would just like to say that if it does come to the three, down to the three choices, I would rather have a special election. I don't feel it's fiscally responsible to have a special election, but I feel that in order to have a, the most fair way to get to fill this vacancy would be a special election, unfortunately. If Councilmember Guerrero, I mean Councilmember Alcala and Mayor Guerrero can't seem to find their way to appoint Dr. Early West. I thank everybody on the council for their time tonight, and I appreciate the opportunity to call in and speak. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Norma Nelson, next, please.
Good evening. I, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. I submitted written comments for the January seventh meeting and for tonight's meeting as well. I would like to echo some of the points that have already been made by the other eight, over eight thousand voters who voted for Dr. Early in this recent election. Today, we stand in the face of supporting our democracy. Today, the West Sacramento City Council has an opportunity to restore the confidence of the West Sacramento voters. That is eight thousand one hundred and twenty-three who voted for Dr. Early West. She was just shy of a few dozen votes to take the seat occupied by Councilmember Akala. As we saw from the discussion earlier this evening, we are short a council member right now. Right now, we need to have that fifth seat filled on the city council. Why would you want to spread the four council members who are currently seated so thin with all of the assignments that need to be made when you can appoint someone tonight who can start running tomorrow, working to represent the citizens and residents of West Sacramento? What if, and what are you going to do when, and if there is a special election and Dr. Early West still wins? You would have just wasted staff time, community time, and wasted taxpayer money. I urge you to support the appointment, I urge you to appoint Dr. Early West to the vacated seat on the city council. I would also like to say that not taking the opportunity or supporting the eight thousand one hundred and twenty-three votes that were cast for Dr. Early West is basically discounting that many voters in West Sacramento. And as someone else had already said, that all of the representatives sitting on that city council, mayor and city council, are there to represent all of the people, all of the voters of West Sacramento, not Broderick side, Southport side, but all of West Sacramento. And so therefore, given the fact that we just had an election and Dr. Early West actually virtually tied with the seat occupied by Dr., by Councilmember Akala. The voters have already spoken. She's been vetted. Let's appoint Dr. Early and get on with the business of running West Sacramento. We need a full city council, five seats. Let's do it tonight. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next is user Galaxy Note Nine, please.
Hi, this is Norton Callister. And I'd like to thank you for having me here, but I would like to say, let's vote. I mean, plain and simple, you not come to agreement, let's put it to a vote. Do not appoint nobody on my behalf. I would like my vote to count. So if we have to have an election, let's have the election. I hate to lose a hundred and fifty thousand dollars that goes to one else, but let's vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is phone user nine four seven seven five one zero.
Hi, thank you. This is Jennifer Melton, and I, I grew up in West Sacramento. I raised my children in West Sacramento. And I don't know about anybody else, but I just keep reflecting on the events of the last week at our capital, our national capital, and keep thinking about politicians who have crazy conspiracy theories and delusional thinking and make terrible choices that compromise our democracy. Just don't understand where we're at. I've met Mayor Guerrero on multiple occasions. I really like her as a warm person. When she won, I thought, okay, here we go. West Sac is going to move in a new direction and I'm going to support my mayor. I'm a little busy right now, but I decided, you know, I'm just going to see what's going on with the city council. And I listened to the last meeting and I couldn't believe it. I cannot believe that Mayor Guerrero said specifically that one of the things, one of her arguments for going to a special election is because the unions want it. I don't think she's speaking for me, and that really makes me angry. We are in the middle of a COVID pandemic where I know our city council needs to spend their time and their energy on actually helping the citizens of this community that are suffering and dying every day. And I appreciate the, the public comments. I understand, I, you know, I appreciate the comment about, you know, smallpox and or chickenpox and, I don't know, four hundred thousand people in our country have just died. So I think you guys have some other things that you might want to take into consideration. Let go of your egos, maybe not worry so much about paying your piper or the union because that's how you maybe were helped to be elected and maybe represents the people.
Thirty seconds.
Thank you to the city council members. Thank you for everyone for your service, but I truly hope you don't make the same disgusting decisions as have been made by our government for the last four years. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Next is phone user two nine six zero seven seven nine.
Hi, this is Rebecca Deepson. I'm a sixteen-year West Sacramento resident. This is my first city council meeting, and I felt compelled to participate as somebody who respects democracy. I'm frankly appalled at the city council and the new mayor's behavior in this election. It is hard work to be an elected official, and I respect that deeply. Thank you all for your service. But to take a position that eight thousand votes from your citizenry, from your city, do not count, do not matter. To send emails to concerned citizens and say that I am worried about the people who didn't vote for Dr. Early, suggests to me that you do not want to build consensus. You do not represent this city. And that is not governance. It is not good governance. And we have no place for that here. This is a time for coming together, building consensus, finding middle ground with people you do not agree with. Dr. Early is qualified. She garnered eight, more than eight thousand votes in this process. It would be a waste of taxpayer money. As we heard tonight, over a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And you know what will happen? We will vote for her again. Because eight thousand people voted for her already, and we will show up again. So what does that do for our city in building consensus? What does that do for the voice of people who want to participate in your city governance? Tonight, the mayor spoke about fiscal oversight committee. Shockingly, also suggested that we should have an equity committee while rejecting an opportunity to have a black woman serve on this city council. Representation matters. And we have an opportunity to move that dial forward.
Thirty seconds.
I urge the city council to take this seriously, to appoint an overly qualified individual, to listen to your constituents and lead with good governance. This matters. Lead by example. Embrace the people who do not agree a hundred percent with you and find middle ground. And if you can't do it in the appointment process, then put it to election because we will tell you again.
Thank you so much. Next is user, phone user two six nine five eight nine nine two zero two.
Good evening, Mayor and council members, as well as the assembled public. I'd like to associate myself with the comments of the last caller. Dr. Angelo Williams, Chief of Staff, to Assembly Member Mike Gibson. Mike Gibson, who is a member of the California Legislative Black Caucus, Democratic Caucus Chair. I'm also a part of LRCF two two seven nine. I belong to several labor unions. I mention these because, and I say this with honest trepidation and also a tremendous amount of sorrow. The point as it relates to the question at hand for the council members, I do not envy their selection or choice. You've heard a tremendous amount of conversation around whether you will go to a special election or an appointment. I would associate myself with all of those individuals that said that they support Dr. Dante Early West. I want to make the record clear on a couple of things. No one selected Dr. Dante Early West. She selected herself. She wasn't a part of Mr. Cabaldin's mailers. Mr. Cabaldin was a part of her mailers. How do I know that? Because I have all of the receipts. I know exactly who ordered what where because she was the first person who called me and said, I would like to stand up after the George Floyd moment and get more involved in my community. And she did by molding one of the most impactful reforms for public policy and police reforms, not just in the state, but in the nation. If you look at what West Sac is doing by simply replacing open positions related to law enforcement with those that could in fact respond with law enforcement, but with a health perspective, this is the middle road between defund the police and any other set of argument as it relates to reforms. What I mean is she's pragmatic.
Thirty seconds.
That's how I met her. That's how I met her. So again, I'm going to associate myself with all of the comments related to Dr. West, whether you appoint her, whether it goes to special election, she'll have my vote and support. But the thing that's most important to me, the problem that I need to address in public and private, and I started to do it, that Mayor Martha Guerrero, instead of meeting and working with the first black woman to run and win eight thousand votes in West Sacramento, she secretly slandered her. She met with the California Legislative Black Caucus chair and attempted to block her endorsement. She talked to labor unions and spread lies and said that she was not a part of the union. How do I know that? And this, you know that, because I'm a part of those organizations. That type of corruption will not stand.
We're moving on to the next speaker. Thank you so much. Next will be the, are you ready? Chica Latine? We're moving next to Flo Kofar.
Good evening. My name is Flojean Kofar. And I am an epidemiologist. I'm a fellow public health person, and I'm calling tonight to ask you to truly consider what makes sense for West Sacramento. West Sacramento, like the rest of the world, is currently in the midst of a pandemic. A pandemic that has reached devastation not only on our physical health, but also our mental and emotional health, and certainly our economic well-being as well. Our country and our state and even our, our, our near cities here have been in the midst of dealing with a white supremacist fascist coup. And many who are not yet ready to join us on the long road to truth and reconciliation about what has happened in this country. And so you find yourselves having just had an election, trying to decide what to do about a vacancy. And so the three options that are before you seem awfully clear, but what doesn't seem clear to me is how we might prioritize that, given that the, an election would cost significant dollars in time, and we just had an election, one where if one weren't able to retain their position and also run for a different one, would have had a very obvious outcome. And so the question that remains here is, does it make sense, given everything that's on the table, to not select the person who had the next highest votes, the next highest votes by less than a hundred, to be in this position? Does it make sense to open it up to people who didn't choose to put their names on the ballot and didn't choose to be vetted in the way that we do with our elections? Or to put the entire city through this process again? And I don't think that makes sense. But furthermore, I think it's really disappointing and disheartening that the tone that's been taken around this conversation has been one to disparage a new person to this work, a person who has values and morals and a track record of being spot on when it comes to important issues. And yet this person is not even being dignified with, you know, basic meetings to have conversations with her simply because of who she's perceived to be affiliated with. And I'm hoping that after the last four years of gaslighting and just outright shame when it comes to truth, that we haven't so far lost our way, that we would ignore the basic premise of our humanity, which is to have a conversation, to reach out and make sure that we have vetted information for ourselves and not gone down a rumor mill before making decisions. And I think Dr. Early West is a fantastic addition to the council. Makes sense, was just a vote earner, the fourth highest, I believe, in all of West Sacramento history. And it doesn't seem to make sense to me to go with any other choice, to go with any other process, especially if that process is going to cost you money, time and energy during a pandemic. I thank you so much for your time and hope that you take my comments under serious consideration.
Thank you so much. Next we have Maria Grealva.
Thank you for this opportunity to speak again. I think we have to not lose sight of why we're taking comments. I would like to thank everybody that spoke so well about Dr. Early, and I would like to also say, wow, thank you so much for speaking so well about her. But I think you need to remember that Scott Rafferty that spoke earlier is an elections attorney. And I think you need to remember that the council's job is to avoid liability and that as Scott Rafferty reminded you, it would be illegal for you to have a special election because you have pending district elections litigation for the past two years. And so basically, I am, as you know, Maria Grealva, have the plaintiff in that litigation. Many, many years ago, prior to, two years ago, we've attempted to bring district elections to West Sacramento. And as everybody knows, Cabaldum fought that. And so for the last two years, Councilman Orozco and Ledesma and, and and the former mayor fought that. very hard. And so right now we have pending litigation. And so how can you have a at-large election when you have district elections litigation? So I don't think that that's possible. You already have a committee that was formed for the application process. I'm very much against this resolution, as you can tell. You already have a committee that was formed. You have one candidate, definitely that's Dr. Early. We know of another candidate, that's Forest Gardens. We know of another potential candidate, that's Joe Deanda. I don't know if caller Ryan Harrison is another potential candidate. He didn't say no, because as I understand, he formally submitted a Facebook Messenger message to Councilman Orozco that didn't receive a reply saying that he was interested. And so that's, those are candidates that write, that have already submitted interest. And so, and so anyway, I, again, we do not have the option of a special election. The appointment process, the application process is the only option. Thank you.
Thank you. Desiree Rojas, next.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, because I, I have very slow internet. Hi, my name is Desiree Rojas. I'm the president of Labor Council for Latin American Advancement, Sacramento Chapter AFL-CIO and Change to Win. I've been listening to a lot of very interesting comments. I would like to also say that I appreciate Dr. Early. I believe that she is an amazing doctor. And I appreciate her involvement in the last election. But the comments that I'm hearing are absolutely, I believe, are straight, a straight direct attack on the West Sacramento mayor. And I really don't appreciate it because she's the first Latina ever, ever voted to be a mayor in West Sacramento. And this has caused a lot of division. And the division really comes from the previous mayor Cabaldon, who for a fact was not in favor of labor. I represent labor. I represent farm workers. I represent a council of a coalition of unions. I work with unions in Northern California, from the Bay Area, all the way to Merced. And I can tell you that I have never heard anybody and never heard the mayor say anything bad about Dr. Early. And I don't appreciate that. Representation matters. It absolutely matters when democracy is left in the hands of voters, always 100%. And right now in this climate, this political climate with the previous Trump as president who caused a lot of chaos. I don't need to, I don't need to mention all the details. You know, the voters and Americans want transparency and they expect us to use the policies in place that govern democracy. And in this case, we are talking about already an application process that widens the equal opportunity for people to participate. I don't appreciate the divide between black and brown here. Okay? I do not appreciate it because we have fought very hard for affirmative action and for equal opportunity and for the opportunity to participate. This has to do with giving the power to the voters and the attack on our mayor is absolutely wrong. I really believe that this application process, or maybe in an election, is going to determine who is rightfully should be on that city council, even at the cost of taxpayers, even after this election. I'm absolutely disappointed in seeing the amount of divide here. And I want to remind everybody that just because you're brown, you're black, you come from labor or you're poor. It's not about the color card issue. It is about the issues, the political issues. Issues that, that are the issues that affect people right now and labor is under attack. Cabaldon has never been friendly to labor and we're talking.
We're moving to Noless Edwards, please.
Good evening, can you hear me? Okay.
Yes.
Yes, great. Good evening. I, let me in all transparency, say that I am not a resident of West Sacramento. I am a resident of Sacramento City, but you know, know that the, the lines cross over. And I have been listening to this entire meeting and was just compelled to say, I understand the, the last caller's frustration. I understand the emotional statement and statements. And I, I, I totally agree and understand where she's coming from. I just wanted to say, first of all, I know Dr. Early personally. And if I was a voter of West Sacramento, I would vote for her. I know her personally. We worked together, I know her personally and professionally, we worked together when we worked at the Department of Corrections. And she and I both did the race and equity work for, for the department. I am in total alignment with everything that has been said about and in support of Dr. Early. I also think that, you know, I don't know if you all read the Sacramento Bee article that came out today. But it, it really illustrated the, the issues that are, that you all have to deal with. And the optics of this to me is really not good. And I think that it's going to have an impact on your council moving forward. Hello?
Please go ahead.
Hello? Oh, okay. Have an impact on the council moving forward. I think that, you know, aside from, you know, the historical point of this, you do have a candidate that is qualified. You do have a candidate, as folks have said, garnered a huge amount of votes. You do have a candidate that's been vetted by the voters. It is not like she's someone coming in new and didn't participate. And that would be, I would understand that if that was the case. That is not the case. I do think that if you look at this, and as I, as I looked at the, the numbers that were cited, I read the, the report from the city about the cost. It is not just 150, it could be up to 250,000 that this would cost. And we are in a pandemic. We, people are losing their lives. People have lost their jobs. This money could be better spent. You know, taking care of some of the other needs of the community. I also want to say on historical point, if, if I remember correctly, if I looked at the last West, West, West Al Camino, I'm sorry, West Sacramento only had, I think, like 4% African American. You need representation. This is, this is a time for change. This is a time for leadership. And I think that the, the city council should take some leadership and, and appoint Dr. Early in this seat. Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you, Ms. Edwards, for attending our meeting. I apologize if I have to cut the attendees off at three minutes. We have a long list of people wanting to speak. Please be mindful of your three-minute timeline. Thank you so much. Next is Becky Olson.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Hi, everybody. It's a long night and it's obviously very impassioned and a lot of people have feelings about this that are quite strong. And I feel like we just went through a very historic election and change. And change is not always bad. Sometimes it's good. And we are hoping as a community that we can move forward in the most productive way. Having said that, I just would ask you to honestly look at yourselves and say, or answer the question, had the situation been different, if we would still be in this situation, making this decision? And I honestly don't believe that. It's not like Dr. West didn't get a whole ton of votes. She was so close to that. It was neck and neck between she and Ms. Alcala. So I feel like it makes the most sense to appoint her. You have it within your power to do that. And if you don't do that, then my vote is for a special election, which I think is a huge waste of money right now. And, sorry. I also have heard lots of names thrown around for the, the application process, which, you know, I implore everybody to run and get involved. And, but where, where are these names coming from? And who, who would be voting for them? Who would be selecting them? That is the least transparent process that I can think of. So I just implore you to truly look in your heart and your head and say, you know, had this situation been different, would I be making the same choice I'm making tonight? And if not, you know, go for special election.
Thank you, Becky.
Thanks.
Next is phone user nine one six nine nine two three seven hundred.
Hi, my name is Nate Eckler. Can, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Thank you for listening to me tonight. I wanted to go reach out. I've been a resident of West Sacramento for 38 years now. I moved here when I was 11 years old. I have served my city in many ways as a volunteer, as a coach, as sitting on a commission. I've received awards from my city and this is my hometown. I, I'm very passionate about it. To go through and, you know, take a look here, you know, there's been a lot of names bandied about who want to go through and participate in the application process. And that's admirable. But where were these names when the time came that they were running? Where, where, when did they go and apply to go and actually run in the seat here? That was a historic turnout. And we've had the opportunity to vet all of these candidates, to go through and be interviewed, to be in public forums, to go through and know where they speak. And as a result, the, the voters went and turned out in, in record numbers. I support Dr. Dante Early West to come in and fill this vacant seat here. She went through and put her name out there. She went and campaigned around. She got the, the trust of 8123 voters to go through and make a difference in this community. They've had the opportunity to go through and select her as going through and being someone who just went right on up with Councilperson Alcala to, you know, be you know, within, within 89 votes, I believe, to go and make a difference here. So we've got an opportunity right now. As a taxpayer, I don't want to go through and see the cost of a private election. You guys are a new council. You have a lot of work to do. The more time that we spend going around here in a circuitous way to not go through and pick, appoint someone who's right in front of us, that the community has already picked, is, is something that goes through and is just, it's wasteful. And the other part of it is to you is I agree with the other folks. I went through the last time there was a city council appointment. I was there. I applied. I went through that process. It's not a transparent process. I was proud to go through and be one of the finalists. At that point in time, Dr. Sandin went through and she won and she was a great candidate. She went and served it. But that was two years after an election. We've gone through and been here of approximately two months since an election. And the opportunity is right here to pick the right candidate to move ahead. I implore all of you to make the right decision and get some work done. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We have our last speaker, phone user nine one six seven two one two nine.
Hi, this is Stephanie Ridgway and I've submitted my written comments. But after listening to the numerous comments tonight, I want to reiterate my request that the council please appoint Dante Early West. She's the most appropriate person for the job and it's the fiscally prudent decision. But I'd also like counsel to advise, if he can, whether, if in fact the council decides to vote to hold a special election, that election can be combined with any recall efforts. Thank you for my, for taking my comment.
Thank you so much. Mayor Guerrero, we are done with our public comments.
Okay, thank you. For some reason I see two hands. Oh, that one is Councilmember Orozco and there's another hand up, I think. Is there, is there Carolyn Sevias on hold or on the line?
Nobody from the attendees has their hand raised?
Okay. Okay, so we'll, we will now close the public comment and bring it back to council for discussion. Councilmember Orozco, your hand is up.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And thank you to all of the speakers who have weathered a very late night to express your, your thoughts and, and share your sentiments with all of us. It does matter. I know we all have lots of things that we could be doing with our time, whether that's tucking in kids at the bed at night or, you know, just finally relaxing or getting some last work done. And we're here. I just wanted to say a few things. I love, I love serving West Sacramento. But I want to candidly talk about two of my biggest frustrations with life as an elected official. The first is cynicism. Too often voters, our neighbors, our own peers, they can only see our motives as self-serving. In the council vacancy debate, I have seen and felt this at play. And frankly, it's all been pretty disheartening. We know it's natural for people in political life to want to surround ourselves with people who we know have proven their loyalty. And because Dr. Early appeared in a mailer with former mayor Cabaldon and I was the one who made the motion to appoint her, arose a dismissive narrative that's been crystallized among Dr. Early's opponents. And, and that's that she would be the mouthpiece for a man who isn't even in office anymore. Or that she would support anything that Councilmember Ledesma and I sought and confound your aims, Madam Mayor. To these folks, I would say this is simply not accurate. I, I could put my hand on a Bible and tell you, tell the citizens of West Sacramento that if my motives were self-serving, there are plenty of people whom I've known longer and have had deeper friendships, who I could have chosen in an application process. I can name many others who I feel more camaraderie with than Dr. Early. And with my hand still on that Bible, I can also tell you, Madam Mayor and Councilmember Alcala, that if we ever disagree, I have no idea how many times Dr. Early would vote for, or vote with me and how many times she would vote with you. My effort has always been about this council giving a voice to the will of the greatest number of voters, 8,123, just until the community can speak for themselves again. And no one whose name we throw out could show the support that Dr. Early had, which matches the percentage of support that Councilmember Alcala earned. Today, our entire day, I've heard the word democracy over and over again. And I, I heard it in such a hopeful tone. Well, it's the same respect for democracy, the same democratic process that I want to see in my mighty little city. Now, the second thing that irks me about politics is that people get punished for changing their minds. They think that if they say position A, that's switching, switching to position B, you know, would lead to public outcry and they'd be perceived as weak, as, as buckling or that people on the other side of the issue will lord it over them. And so changing your mind, not changing your mind rather, becomes like a reflex. We just, you know, cross our arms and close our ears and shut our eyes and that never more happens, never happens more than when it feels like people are pushing you. But the very nature of representative government is that you hear the people, the community you serve and respond to, those voices that you see in the local supermarket, not the, the online petitions signed by people who don't even live here, but the people in our community. The very embodiment of leadership is listening. is listening and learning how much action can mean to your community. How infrequently, how infrequently do we hear an elected official say, you know what, I've heard from the people, and I've deliberated on what they said, and I reflected, and I prayed on it, and I was inspired, and I want to walk a new path. Frankly, to me, that's not weakness, that's, that's strength, especially in this instance. I've never been the type of person who complains when someone comes late to a party. I celebrate that they showed up. And Madam Mayor, if you are a Councilmember Alcala, change your mind, I will offer an unqualified applause because, as Dr. Martin Luther King said, "The time is always right to do what's right." And if you talk to Dr. Early, you will see that you're not rivals. Leadership means working with those who put in the work, even if you have disagreements with them. And we all followed the inauguration. We very easily say that today was about unity and healing. Kamala Harris ran against Joe Biden, but he appointed her. And I note that today, because a handful of our community have suggested that Dr. Early's race or gender is the only reason so many people are pushing for appointment. So it's, it's crucial to note that not only her overwhelming community support, but also her unique exceptional qualifications to serve are extremely important. But I can't act, it wasn't, I didn't raise this argument in our last meeting, but I also can't act, especially in light of all of the events today, that I can't act like her race and gender are irrelevant. Uh, we have been called the most diverse council in the region, but we have never had a black person on this dais or through a Zoom meeting, let alone a black woman. And we could send a powerful signal to any business or resident thinking about coming to our city that we accept and value all voices, especially when they put in the hard work. And Madam Mayor, you, you quoted Amanda Gorman, and I'll do the same. She said today, "For while we have our eyes on the future, history has its eyes on us." I agree, Amanda. As was stated today, ninety-two people have put their hands on a Bible for an inauguration swearing in, and today was the first time a black woman touched one in that context. It was a profound statement for every black or Indian girl, any young girl in America, and I along with my young children welled up with pride when it happened. It meant that today would be the last day of never having an African-American or a woman vice president. And today, it could also be the last day that West Sacramento has never had a black woman council member. We can make history together. We could follow the democratic process. We could listen to the voters in our community. And we could do the right thing. I move again to appoint Dr. Dante Early to the city council vacancy by acclamation. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Orozco. And I would be asking for motions, um, so we'll take that after, um, we receive comment at this point from our fellow council members. Um, and I don't see any additional hands to speak. Do, um, do either, one of the other council members like to speak at this point?
Well.
The Councilmember Ledesma, you may speak.
Thank you. Um, first of all, um, thank you to the community for, uh, staying with us tonight, um, and, um, showing, or we could hear your voice and showing up and, uh, showing your opinion on where you stand on this. This has been one of the more difficult weeks, um, few weeks, uh, through this issue, um, that I've had in my ten years of council. And, um, I think one of the things that, uh, I've taken great pride in with our city is our ability to disagree, our ability to get through issues and then heal and come together. Um, we've had, uh, in my ten years, some rough times post-recession when I landed here, and, um, there are changes in our community, um, projects or other. Uh, we've had that, uh, we've had that opportunity to sort of disagree, uh, and, um, to show our, show really with passion what we're, what we're, what we want, how we want our city to go for. We've been, we've come so far as a city from nineteen eighty-seven, when the founders came together and said, let's, and the city agreed, let's incorporate, and let's be responsible for our own destiny. And, um, I stand on the shoulders of all those who led it in years past, and I welcome my new colleagues here, um, just a month ago or month and a half ago, uh, because the voters spoke. And I think that, that is something that I, I respect my colleagues. I've respected all my colleagues in the past, um, whether we disagreed or agreed. And my neighbors, I've had my fair share of neighbors down the street or whatever who disagreed with projects or issues in front of the council, and I've listened to them, and I've tried to explain my position, and there came points when we agreed to disagree. And I learned my lessons very early on, and even in, uh, two thousand, two thousand and one, at Planning Commission, when a colleague said we're going to disagree, but at the end of the day, we're all still neighbors. And I still hold that as a value in my heart. Um, and it pains me a great deal to hear, um, and the voices of, of concern and the voices of, um, today, that since tonight and through the past couple of weeks, and, um, that are, are we reaching a, and we reaching a point of, of total divisiveness? And it, it has been disheartening, uh, to a degree. Um, but I want us to speak to city and recognize I, I still have a lot of hope, um, and optimism, whether, whether, whatever we decide here tonight. Um, yeah, I, I, I appreciate the conversations the mayor and I have had early on as part of the subcommittee, and, um, I've known Martha for fourteen, fifteen years, I think, and, and, um, I think we know each other, uh, to a degree, and are, can have a good, carry on a good conversation. The fact is, is we fundamentally disagree on this issue. And I would welcome a change of heart, um, if she had one, and I would welcome her in as well. Um, and I'm getting to know Councilmember Alcala. Um, I know she served on the, our, our school board, um, and there are issues, uh, we will, we have disagreed with, but took great heart in our first meeting, ninety-eight, ninety-nine percent of the agenda, whatever it was, it was a four oh vote. And I want residents to know, no matter how we end up out of this, um, we will be okay. And it starts with all of us. It starts with all of you, and it starts with me, to understand that this is an honest disagreement about how we move forward. And, um, I'm a believer that democracy spoke just sixty days ago. And, um, and I respect, um, eighty-one hundred votes, and I, I laid my, at the last meeting, said it very plainly, and, and, um, how I felt. But tonight in front of us is a different, um, we're at a different crossroad, and the, the public, I appreciate again weighing in, and, and I want the, the, the public to know that I will, and no matter how we vote here tonight and how this ends up, at least I will work, try to continue to work with this council and move our city forward. There's so much to do, and there's so much good we're doing that affects people's lives and makes it better. And, um, so I just want to leave that, that note about how we move forward. I, I, I've stated my position on how we think we should go. Um, but I'm also pragmatist in understanding that I think we may just be at an impasse here. And, um, while, um, I would prefer we can make an appointment and move forward, I am not of the belief, uh, of suggesting, um, that a, that a, a process of applications is, is more democratic than the voters themselves. So, um, I, again, I, I want the community to understand. I appreciate your passion. I appreciate your, your concerns and the direction. And, um, I ask you all to dig deep in your hearts, um, around how we can come together when this is, when we get through all this. Um, we've become, West Sacramento has, has become a, a bright light in our region. It's all of our homes. Um, it's, we're the envy of the region in a lot of ways. Um, and that's my ask tonight, is that all of us, um, and that we will be okay, and we, we need to work towards that. So I'll reserve any more comments from that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Ledesma. Um, Councilmember Alcala, I have a question. Um, there were a couple, I see two hands up, and I know we're still trying to work out the kinks on getting public comment in. Would you mind if I take those two comments?
No, please.
Okay, so I'd like to reopen the public comment. This is not a normal procedure, but because we are, um, trying to work out some technical difficulties, I know this, uh, individual was trying to call in and was having a hard time. Um, and I know our Zoom link was challenging, um, cutting people a lot of the time. So, um, just want to give the two callers on the line an opportunity. Madam Clerk, can you please call them? And you have three minutes each.
Yes, Madam Guerrero. Um, I'll call on Caroline, and next, after Caroline, if Chica Latin is ready, then, um, you're next after Caroline.
Hello, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Thank you. Mayor and council members, this is Caroline Cebias. I'm a community advocate, um, active in the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce Board and the Latino Economic Council. Um, first, congratulations, um, Mayor Guerrero on your election and bringing the, uh, the new leadership the voters asked for. Second, I support the option of using an open application process for anyone interested in being considered for appointment to the, uh, council vacancy. I don't know, um, personally, Ms. Early, so my recommendations focus on process as it relates to economic recovery and small business recovery specifically. Uh, one, the, the open, my thoughts are, one, the open application process has been used by the city, including under ex-mayor Cabaldin. It's a proven process for voters, candidates, and staff, and it eliminates the need for a special election and the related, uh, costs. Two, this was an election to a political office. Voters elected candidates based on the public positions candidates took during their campaign. In this case, Ms. Early chose a losing slate. She wasn't able to convince the majority of voters that she had their best interest in mind, especially your everyday working people, therefore could not gather, uh, enough votes to win. Third, no candidate that runs for public office and loses is owed an appointment regardless of the number of votes received. Mr. Harrison, uh, very eloquently and logically explained the why. The choices, the candidate choices would be different in that scenario. The voters have spoken. Again, candidates that lose are not owed an appointment. However, Ms. Early could apply under the open application process and be considered if she wishes to serve on the council. Four, many comments have argued, uh, for a black appointment and have tried to denigrate our, uh, Latina mayor, creating a black-brown issue. This was not an election based on race. It was about voters choosing candidates they felt reflected the majority voter interest best based on campaign platforms presented by the candidates. Playing the race card is a very ugly and divisive thing to do, and it doesn't serve the public interest. It's an insult to the people of West Sacramento. Again, I support an early, an open, uh, application process, which would be transparent to the public and available to anyone interested in applying, and I hope the divisive race card is no longer played, given how destructive that will be for, for West Sacramento. Anyone can disagree with the election process, but at least be civil. I believe that what ex-mayor, that's what ex-mayor Cabaldin would want and expect for the residents of West Sacramento, and West Sacramento deserves better. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Caroline. If Chica Latin is ready, please go ahead and speak. Mayor Guerrero, I think we are done.
Thank you, um, Madam Clerk for, um, taking on the addition. I think, uh, Chica just has her hand up and may not realize it. Um, so, uh, Councilmember Alcala, um, now we're going to close the public comment and bring it back to, um, Councilmember Alcala, who is requesting to speak.
Thank you. I'll be really brief. I really still support an open application process. Um, when I was elected, eight thousand two hundred and twelve people put their faith that I would do the right thing, that I would follow process. And there's a reason that we do have precedent and we have rules. It's so that we avoid arbitrary and capricious conduct by elected officials. I, I think you're right. We are at an impasse, and at this point, we've heard many members of the public speak very passionately on both sides of what they believe the right thing to do is. But because we are at this impasse, I believe our only solution at this point is to have a special election, and that's what I will be voting for.
Thank you, Councilmember Alcala. So, this has been a really challenging process. Um, and, and I'm really grateful for all the comments that we've received and emails, um, and, um, also the live public comment here today. Um, you know, individuals who, um, have been closely monitoring, you know, this discussion, um, you know, offering advice and guidance, uh, and, you know, there's, there's also just like advice in that, you know, this is, um, this is important for our council, you know, to make certain decisions. And, um, we, we each individually, you know, council members, I know you have all been very busy, um, taking phone calls, you know, spending a lot of time with members of our community, um, with organizations, members of organizations, and, um, also, you know, speaking to potential candidates. And I know that, um, all of that has been taken to heart, you know, for each of you. And each of us are thoughtfully considering, you know, what is in the best interest of our city. And I appreciate that, and I, and I, and I value that. And I do know there are going to be times we disagree. And it's for, you know, it's for reasons that we passionately feel about. You know, we've had some, you know, strong debates in the past over, but this, and we still feel passionately about it. I, I can understand. Um, shortly after the election, it was, uh, you know, it was, it was a close call. And I know that, um, just, you know, grateful that, you know, the outcome, um, you know, uh, for, you know, the council members here for winning and your representation, your dedication, your time, your, you know, how I know it takes away from your families and your hard work, you know, that, that achieved this success. And for all the candidates who I know worked very hard, who I know were out, um, you know, trying to achieve, um, a spot on council. And I appreciate all their hard work, especially during the pandemic. Um, you know, they, they were working their own jobs, having their, you know, they have their families. And so, you know, I, I, you know, appreciate and value their commitment to stand up and, and run. I've heard, you know, prior to the election, um, candidates who were pondering the thought of running and the impact it would have on their family, and, um, you know, how challenging it is to run, because, you know, it is expensive, and it is, um, just a hustle all the way around to, um, you know, secure support from fa- family members, you know, or friends to run a campaign. And it's not easy. It's not an easy process for anybody to do that. And I, um, wanting to make sure that And I am wanting to make sure that, you know, we have a process as city council that, you know, we can work together and we are unified. That's what we heard, and we are unified in a way that we can best represent our residents, our constituents, you know, our, you know, businesses. And, and we all feel passionately about what we think is important. And we are in a disagreement, and I know that. And I don't, I don't have any, you know, ill feelings because I, I, I understand where everybody is coming from, and I, and I've heard both sides and spent a lot of time with both sides. And I just think, though, it is important, given the past precedents that we've had with the open application process, which gave us an opportunity to have that transparency on accepting applicants. Those applicants and their resumes were posted publicly and that those interviews were handled in a public, you know, forum among, in the presence of the council members. And as a result of that, there were some excellent candidates that were selected who, who gave, you know, 150% of their time on council. You know, Councilmember Sandin, who I know always stepped up and took more, more board or commission assignments. And not only that, she chaired them. And not only that, she took on, you know, being the chairwoman of the SAC Metro Chamber. So when we went to cap to cap, she took on that. It was even beyond her own council assignments. You know, she's, she's one of, I think, one of, one of the biggest role models of success on our council. And it's because of council members like that. You know, Councilmember Bab Sandin, who, when she dedicated all that time, she actually put time, her work aside so that she can serve. And so that service, you know, helps West Sacramento. And it's that service that I think we are all seeking from, from one another in dedicating that time and among the, you know, the candidate that is, you know, whether it be, you know, through an application process or will it be through a special election? And in considering Dr. Dante Early. I, I know Dr. Dante Early from prior, you know, I think we were, we worked together on the Aging Commission. And I've, I've known, I've known about her and have met her a few times around in the community. And I just know that she is going to be a hard worker here on council. However, I feel and I, you know, you know, would encourage her to, you know, if we decided to open up an application process, which I believe is, is a democratic and fair and open process for all, to allow all candidates who are qualified. And they're going to be candidates because they have commitments, more commitments than, than I have or any one of us on council has. You know, they care for loved ones who are fragile and sick, and yet they want an opportunity to serve. And I would like to, you know, this is a unique opportunity that can be afforded to them without the hard work of a campaign. And that's why I was really pushing hard for an opportunity to allow people for, you know, us to consider. Not, not to dismiss at all, at any point, not to dismiss the votes that she harnessed, not to dismiss who she is as, as a, you know, working mom, as a Girl Scout leader, as a public health, you know, professional and mental health, excellent mental health professional, and her service in the community and her representation at, at the PTO. You know, she's an outstanding member of our community, not, do not dismiss any of that. Do not dismiss the representatives of the black community who took the time out, and many who I know, who took the time out to speak tonight. Grateful that we, I work with you and I, you know, I'm appreciative of you taking the time to speak to our council on your thoughts and your interests. And, you know, if we, we are going to, you know, make a choice here to move on to a special election, that, you know, Dr. Early wins, I'm look forward to embracing and working with her. And I, I, you know, do not, you know, doubt for a second that she will, you know, do an excellent job. It's, it's the process of opening it up for an application. And that was the process that I, where she would have been able to have the opportunity. And as, as Councilmember Orozco, to share where she would be able to share, independent from what our outside interests are saying. As, you know, there are outside interests are saying, and to allow for her to share why, you know, and to come before the council who will make the, the decision. It is our decision and we will be able to make the decision. And so it would be, she may have been the candidate that we could have chose. Absent an application process, it is difficult for me to, to make that decision, to move forward and appoint without an application process. I just think it eliminates an opportunity for other candidates who are incredibly interested, who would be just as honored and who I have seen and understood, you know, what their credentials are and in service to our community, who have stepped up in many other ways, whether it be ensuring we get funding for Memorial Park, working in the Little League, or, you know, representing, you know, the community by making sure youth are getting services and support in our community. Or, you know, those who are, you know, serving in other capacities. Just we, we do have an extraordinary number of community members who have done so much to serve our community. And I, you know, just, you know, would like to have that process open so that they can share what their interests are, and then from there go to make a decision. And it could very well be Dr. Early's spot. But absent that, I just, I just don't see why, you know, we need to just make a straight appointment. And if there are no other public comments, we will take into consideration Councilmember Orozco's motion and move to, you know, for that motion. There is a motion on the table by Councilmember Orozco.
I'll second.
Okay. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Orozco?
Aye.
Councilmember Alcala?
No.
Councilmember Ledesma?
Aye.
And Mayor Guerrero?
No.
Motion?
Is there a motion for application process?
Madam Mayor, I will make the recommendation, and I appreciate your, your remarks. I mean, we all, all of us tonight gave our opinions and our passions and, and certainly we have differences. And I want to state for the record that nobody on this council has done anything outside of, as a set process. And I just don't accept the premise that, or the accusation there was capricious activity or behavior here. So I'd ask that we try to, in the spirit of, we've got to work together, that, that language is what divides our community, and I just have to say that. And and respectfully, we'll then, with that, move forward in making a motion to accept the recommended action of Consideration of Resolution 2112. The City Council, the City of West Sacramento, calling a special all-male battle election on August 31st, 2021, and requesting Yellow County Elections to provide election services. And end.
Thank you, Councilmember Ledesma. But I think Councilmember Alcala was going to speak at this moment. I, I recognize you, but she, but she did have her mic up and but I just wanted you to finish your, I didn't know you were going to call a motion, but Councilmember Alcala?
Yes, I wanted to clarify, Councilmember Ledesma. When I said capricious and arbitrary, I was responding to why we have rules. At no time was that to reflect you or anyone else on this council. So if that's the way you took it, I apologize because that was not intended for any single person in this council. We're talking about why we have rules, and that's what I was trying to explain.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Alcala. Councilmember Ledesma, you have a motion for?
Thank you.
Yes, the recommendation for Resolution 21-12. And I will accept second for that resolution to move the resolution.
It's not my first choice, but I will second it.
Okay, Councilmember Orozco seconds it. And Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes, Councilmember Alcala?
Aye.
Councilmember Orozco?
Aye.
Councilmember Ledesma?
Aye.
And Mayor Guerrero?
Aye.
Okay. Next, let's see, we will move to item 24, where we received, we received a memo on this item that we will table it for, to our next meeting, given the time, the time of day here that we are running.
Madam Mayor, if I may, I know it's late in the evening. Would we mind taking a five-minute break?
Absolutely, Councilmember Ledesma, I completely agree with you.
Thank you.
We will take a five-minute break and come back. Thank you. Oh. ... of the 2021 draft housing element for submission to the California Housing and Community Development, Economic Development and Housing Consideration of Amendments to the Housing Trust Fund Program. So I think we will receive a presentation from either Elijah Ortega or Ms. Allen.
Yes, I will be giving a short presentation tonight.
Okay.
So, good evening, Mayor and, and council members. I'm here tonight to present for your consideration the draft 2021 to 2029 housing element of the general plan. I'd like to first begin with an overview of the entire document. You can see here each of the housing element sections and associated appendices. It begins with an introduction, then moves into the outline of housing goals, policies, and programs. It then includes an analysis of internal consistency with the general plan, and finally, an outline of community outreach that was part of the update process. The document includes appendices, including a housing needs assessment, sites inventory and map, program evaluation, and analysis of affirmatively furthering fair housing, and a community outreach appendix. The housing element is one of multiple elements or chapters of the general plan. As with all general plan elements, the housing element must be a physical, long-range plan that outlines statements of city policy. The housing elements operates on an eight-year planning period, which means it is updated more frequently than the other general plan elements. And this housing element, again, will be a plan for the 2021 to 2029 planning period. The housing element is required to maintain consistency with the other policy statements outlined in the general plan. At its core, a housing element should function to specify and strengthen, and of course, support the general plan vision. So to this end, our draft document focuses heavily on the vision of complete communities outlined in the general plan. This means communities that are meeting, meeting the basic needs of all city residents and communities that provide fair access to transit, public services, and communities that support overall healthy lifestyles and civic engagements. Providing a full range of housing options is critical to this vision, and connecting people's housing options to affordable mobility options also aligns the housing element with the city's strategies towards climate resilience. So a comprehensive community outreach strategy is important to any general plan update. And in the context of the pandemic, this was even more true. During the commission process, we identified key strategies for generating community feedback. And one of the most important was ensuring that we utilize social media and an online presence to both inform our residents of what the housing element update is, and of course, to generate feedback from the community. So in October, we launched a publicly available community housing survey on all social media platforms and on the project webpage. Over 450 total responses were collected with more than 500 engagements online. Another area of focus was outreach to local and regional, regional organizations engaged in housing or other social services. And so to do this, we identified a group of stakeholder organizations to engage with as part of a group and also to engage with one-on-one with the project team. These organizations, and you can see them, some of them listed on the right, helped us to identify areas of focus and priority issues. helped us to identify areas of focus and priority issue areas for both their organizations and their membership or clients in West Sacramento. The third part of the community outreach strategy was to identify avenues that we could distribute information to community members. So we engage with our community churches, mobile home parks, and apartment complexes, and of course, the Chamber of Commerce. Through our community outreach strategy, we gathered a great amount of feedback, and we did our best to ask the question, where is this comment addressed in the housing element? And we did our best to do that for every comment and every piece of feedback that we gathered from the community. So with the responses we received from the community housing survey, which are also included in Appendix E, we identified some of the major recurring topics of feedback, and I'll go over that very quickly in the next slide. We also finally hosted a virtual public meeting, which was a publicly available webinar, and participants were largely community members in that meeting, many of whom had little prior knowledge of the project. So we took that opportunity to focus on both educating about the housing element and identifying, of course, more priorities for the community. Here are the top issue areas that were identified from community members. The most common responses are at the top of the graphic, but all topics identified here were recurring priority areas for residents. Feedback regarding senior housing, roads and traffic, and larger home lots were at the top of the list, and the availability of amenities such as parks and trails, and the affordability of single-family homes were also common responses. The regional housing needs assessment is one of the specific requirements that the city has to meet in this housing element. This data signs to the city what's called a RIN number, and what that says is that your city is projected to grow and to require this amount of new housing units in the next eight-year planning period. And so this number helps us identify sites and begin to think about the ways in which we can prepare for, and helps to facilitate the increase in housing units that are required for the city. So you can see in the table to the right, our RIN number there for the next eight-year planning period is just over 9,400 new residences that are going to be needed for current and future city residents. I'd like to end now with a summary of the project timeline and some important milestones going forward. So at this point, we are seeking a council recommendation to submit the draft document to HCD to conduct their 60-day review of the draft document. A primary component of HCD's 60-day review is to determine if the housing element substantially complies with state law. After their review is complete, we will work to make a round of final revisions that will respond to both the public comments that we received on the item tonight, and that also respond to HCD's comments that they provide to us after their review. Then we will come back to the City Council with a final document for your consideration in the spring. That concludes my presentation. I'm available to answer any questions that the council may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Elijah. I'm going to ask our council members if you have any questions. Councilmember Roscoe, do you have a question?
It's not a question, maybe a comment. Or as I always say, a questment. I just want to say, Elijah, fantastic presentation, and big kudos to Raul and Elijah, and those who have put in countless hours on this project. I've had a chance to speak with staff, and also commissioners who have heard this presentation. I understand that their feedback was incorporated into the final product, the product that has been presented to us through the report and also through the presentation. And I appreciate that. And I also appreciate that it's a very difficult time to solicit public feedback, but despite the challenges, it appears that you've done a fantastic job outreach to local nonprofits and stakeholders, as well as simple members of the community who want to give their feedback and participate in the process. I know this happens every eight years, and I also know that we're not, we're going to have an opportunity to see this again once it comes back from HCD. So I'll keep my comments minimal. I just wanted to express my appreciation for all the hard work, and it's wonderful to see Elijah back again. You get better and better in front of us, and it's fantastic to see. So thank you so much to all who worked on this and for the great presentation.
Councilmember Ledesma.
I'll save my comments and... Is there public comment coming on this?
It looks like there's public comment, yes.
Yeah, I'll wait till after public comment, thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, so I'll open it up for public comment. Madam Clerk, are there any written, or actually, there is a written public comment that I've received, and I think there's some live public comment.
Mayor, thank you. We received public comments, they're posted on our website. Let's call on Mr. Cornelius Burke, and after that, Mr. Lamel Skerritt. Mr. Burke, go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the City Council. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak tonight. I sent a letter, so I'll keep my remarks very brief, giving the time. First and foremost, I just want to thank the city staff and the hard work of the 2021 draft housing element. The ADUs, the vacancy sites, innovative housing solutions are very helpful to help the city reach its housing goals. It's a large number from HCD and SECOG, and we're hopeful the city can reach those goals. One item of concern that was identified in the draft housing element was the need to enact building electrification. We do want to express some concern about the potential cost for that. We do request that, given COVID, you delay implementing that when you pass the draft housing element. Post-COVID, when we get a better snapshot of economic realities, we request that if you do go forward with building electrification, it's not a mandate, and it's based upon incentives, and it's done in a cost-effective way, not to be burdensome, and also ensure that the city meets its climate change goals and also its housing goals. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak tonight. Look forward to working with you. Thank you for all that you do. The North State Building Industry Association looks forward to working with you to make sure that West Sacramento remains a great city to live, work, and play. Thank you so much.
Go ahead, Mr. Skerritt.
Thank you. I apologize that I wasn't able to get written comments in. I just got to the housing elements just this past week, and been pretty busy on a few other items. And so I'm going to give some comments based upon what I saw. And the first piece is, is for your low and very low income levels, there seems to be an absence of solutions that include equity. Equity is the number one means of moving people from income level in the United States of America, period. And there seems to be potentially the opportunity for moderate and above-moderate folk solutions in terms of affordable housing, for them to get affordable housing in terms of housing that has equity. In other words, buying a home or condominium or otherwise. But those options did not seem to be one that was being sought out for low-income and very-low-income people, which indirectly means that those people who are all too often are ethnic minorities will remain in that same income level long-term because they're not actually being able to engage in the best means of moving from income level A to B. So I encourage you to rethink about how do you create, whether it be condominiums or new homes, that comes along with programs to help low-income and very-low-income people actually be able to share, not just in rental property. So that's the first piece. The other one is on the participation with the Housing Trust Fund Program. I encourage you to rethink the Housing Trust Fund Program as an opportunity to give builders the opportunity to bypass building their allotment of affordable housing, or inclusionary housing. And if anything, if you are going to continue that, I then would expect you to put expectations in place in terms of how those builders qualify for that housing, or for the Housing Trust Fund Program, with things such as making sure that they're actually contributing towards, or using PLAs, or making sure that their labor agreements in place, and components that actually serve the people of the greater community. They're thus are bringing money back into the community through their building practices and their labor practices. Another idea that I didn't see in there that I think would be good is, for those who choose to build in the area, let's make sure that they focus first on building their allotment of low-income and very-low-income housing before they actually start building their market-rate housing as a means to make sure that the developers are actually meeting their targets and their goals so that we can truly have affordable housing built at the necessary pace to keep up with on what we need in our communities.
Thank you so much.
Those are all my comments. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Skerritt. Shannon, you can go ahead.
Thank you. My name is Shannon McCaffrey. I'm a staff attorney with Legal Services of Northern California. I'm making comments today on behalf of our client, the Sacramento Housing Alliance. First, we really appreciate the amount of work the city and its staff has put into the housing element update this far. We have submitted written comments that go in-depth regarding our concerns about the current draft. In my live comments now, given the late hour and limitations, I'm going to focus on our concerns about the city's obligation to affirmatively further fair housing. And this is a new requirement in the sixth cycle housing element update, and it's an obligation for jurisdictions to affirmatively further fair housing. Essentially, the goal of this new requirement is to undo the historic patterns of segregation. We know the city wants to take steps to reach these goals, but the current draft does not do so. The affirmatively furthering fair housing obligation requires both an analysis of the city's housing patterns, as well as programs to address the needs identified in that analysis. Here, the city had a strong in-depth analysis of the affirmatively furthering fair housing needs, and the analysis explains the need to site and develop affordable housing in the high-opportunity areas of the city, which are south of the shipping channel. The sites inventory includes 20 sites for low-income housing in total. Unfortunately, only two of these 20 sites are located south of the shipping channel in these higher-opportunity areas. Even more unfortunate is that both of these sites in the south are legally inadequate because they're greater than 10 acres in violation of state law. So therefore, there are no adequate sites in higher-opportunity areas of the city for low-income housing in the current draft. Further, the remaining 18 sites identified for low-income housing are all concentrated in the northeast portion of the city. The C-TAC Opportunity Map, which was included in the housing element draft and attached to our written comments, identifies these areas in the northeast as low-resource or high-segregation and poverty regions, which is the lowest opportunity ranking on the C-TAC scale. Essentially, the low-income housing sites should not be concentrated in one area, and especially not in a low-resource and high-segregation area. These sites, as is, would function to further concentrate poverty in the city and perpetuate segregation. If the city needs to rezone or subdivide parcels to accomplish citing that will affirmatively further fair housing, then it should consider developing programs to overcome those constraints that may exist. The housing element presents an opportunity to shape the city for the next eight years. We ask that council refrain from adopting the housing element draft proposed today due to legal deficiencies outlined in my comments now, but also in the written comments. And we ask that the city take time to review and revise the proposed low-income housing sites and other components of the housing element draft before submitting to HCD. The city should not submit a draft to HCD that is deficient in this primary component, the sites inventory. And that concludes my comments, thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Guerrero, we have no more.
Oh, thank you. So we'll now close the public comment and bring it back to council for discussion. Are there any council members who would like to ask any questions or? Provide any council member, I'll call, thank you.
Thank you. I saw a lot of red flags raised. So I'm going to ask our staff to address some of the concerns that were brought up by our last speaker in a new draft. So what I would like to do is bring this back in about a month for consideration.
Just to help out our staff there, could you be more specific about the issues?
Well, there were certain, well, there were certain issues that were addressed that were of concern. One of them was housing. You know, most of it being concentrated in the northern areas. We often talk about equity, and this is housing equity that we're talking about. So those are concerns that were raised. There were, I believe there were other issues. See, I believe they addressed how we need to come up with programs to assist in economic development in these areas. There were so many, I couldn't even list them all. There were concerns that one of the legal services had.
Okay, I think, yeah, I just want to get some specifics, so to give Elijah an opportunity to respond. We had to truncate the presentation quite a bit tonight to respect the hour here, so.
Exactly.
Yeah, hand it over to Elijah.
Okay.
Yeah, first, I'd like to say, you know, thank you to Shannon and Legal Services for your comments, and of course, for your letter and for your service to our community and residents. We can and we will continue to work with Legal Services on potential changes to the documents. We appreciate the involvement, you know, that Legal Services has in vetting jurisdictions, housing elements throughout the region. We feel importantly that their comments are addressable, and I think more importantly that there is adequate time in our schedule left to respond to these comments. Ultimately, tonight, we're asking for your approval to send the draft document to HCD to gather their feedback. Now, it may be that HCD has the same feedback as our public comments, or they may have additional feedback outside of what's been presented via public comment. We recommend again tonight that the best course of action at this time is to send the document to HCD and to work to incorporate any changes that both the state and the public commentators have suggested before bringing a final document back to the council in the spring.
Thank you, Elijah. Any other comments, Councilmember Alcala?
No, that's fine, thank you for addressing that.
Okay, Councilmember Ledesma.
Thank you, Mayor. Elijah, thank you for all your work on this and staff's work to get this done. I can't believe it's been eight years since we updated it, but this is a hugely important document for the city and kind of how we how we plan to grow our city in years to come. I think what we've seen in the past eight, you know, since I've been on council, our city has really led in its ability to find or to plan around housing, housing needs. And we have, we are the, we are the area of all growth in Yellow County for new housing and where the population growth will be. And this document is basically setting the precedent on about how we're going to accommodate that growth. So I really appreciate all the work and care and thought that's gone into it because we are trying to tackle a couple of things in here, mostly articulate, that we are planning for the growth. And I always remind people when these kind of things come up because it's a requirement, we have to have it. But this is beginning, becoming a more important issue as the state is very, the governor is very clearly articulated, especially on RIN guidelines and housing requirements, that cities manage housing well. I think we have. And I think this is an area where the planning that's gone into it, the thought that's gone into it, how we've zoned, how we've planned for housing all across the city, whether it's subdivision housing in Southport or infill housing in other parts of the city. It's all important because we got to accommodate the growth. And I just I appreciate the work and thought that's I appreciate the work and thought that's gone into it. We know this is a draft. We know people are going to have comments and that's the process. Um, but it's more important that we, we, the planning that we, we go into this with, it's very clear about our intent to accommodate the housing. The, the, uh, the, the arena figure in itself of the 9,500 new residential, um, uh, units is important. Um, but I also want to make a point kind of outside the housing. This is our plan and, and I want to make sure the city manager Elijah get it right. Correct me if I'm wrong, but this is our plan, how we plan to, how, how we actually plan to address to the state where we're going to get the housing. But it takes kind of a couple, a couple of things to happen. And that is, we need the landowners. We don't own this land. We, 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 we do a lot of work putting in infrastructure, putting in the, the, the plumbing and wiring beneath the ground and trying to do it in areas, getting grants and public funding to make sure that where we need info housing, that this, 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 this can happen, but we still need the developers and the landowners to build the housing. And, um, so I, I, it is a hugely important point to make because I think people see this and they go, oh, great, the city's going to build all this new housing. No, we're, we're, we're simply articulating what we're, how we're going to go about it, accommodating the growth. And, um, we still need partners in, in private sector and sometimes the public sector when it's affordable housing. Um, but this sets the table for what, what we're expected to do. And I think, like I said, we, we've done a pretty good job. I think, um, we haven't, you know, I don't think we're, we're called out by many about, um, kind of how we plan for housing in the future. So, again, I'm just kind of calling out the work and how important this is and see the city manager let up. So maybe I said something wrong, but.
No, I just want to be sure we addressed, uh, yeah, that we addressed the question you sort of raised there about just kind of step, taking a step back and looking at what is the essential purpose of a housing element. You mentioned the arena numbers. And, uh, I'm going to let Elijah give the technical answer. I, I think I played a supporting role to Raul in the last housing element, but it really is about capacity. It's about showing that we have the capacity, uh, in the city to meet those numbers and where appropriate sites would be. So Elijah, if you want to elaborate on that for the council, please.
Um, yeah, the, uh, thank you, Aaron. Um, yeah, that, that's completely correct. And, and that's, um, of course, um, I believe the kind of the crux of, of where some of the issues are being raised by, by Shannon and, and her organization. Um, I think I'd like to ask at this point for the city clerk to, um, allow Mr. Matthew Gurkin to, to weigh in on this and, and to unmute here. Um, because I think that he'll be of value, uh, to this conversation, um, uh, to both you, a council, council member Ledesma and, and council member, uh, all callers' concerns. Um, uh, more specifically out, being able to outline, um, our strategy for addressing, um, some of the concerns, um, that have come from the pub, public commentators. So, um, if, uh, Matthew, you, you, uh, have an opportunity to weigh in here.
Yes. Good evening, uh, Madam Mayor, uh, members of the council. Thank you for hanging around for, uh, what council member Ledesma described correctly as a very important, uh, planning exercise. Um, I, I second the comments that Elijah has about, um, you know, we had a very substantial in numbers, but more importantly substantial in content engagement process, including, uh, the folks with Legal Services, their comments and their input, um, was very valuable and directly is showing up in the housing, the draft housing element you see before you. And like Elijah said, we will continue to work with, um, them. Um, with regard to, um, the, um, comments about affirmatively furthering fair housing, this is a section of the housing element that, um, Shannon correctly points out is, um, is aimed at getting at historic injustices and it's the subject of some pretty complex and, um, technical detailed analysis in the appendix of the housing element. Um, but with regard to, um, high resource area mapping, um, you know, the way that's done, it, it looks at census tracts, which are very coarse and the mapping is showing higher resource areas in the southern portion of the planning area by census tract. Um, but we, we also need, um, to consider, um, everything else that goes into resources, the availability of transit, the availability of access to jobs and services. And, and so we can't just myopically only look at one, uh, piece of information, the, uh, the mapping that was referenced, the high resource, lower resource area mapping, but also, um, other factors. And that's, that's what we have tried to do here with staff to put together, uh, sites inventory that, um, meets arena objectives, but also, uh, the new state law requirements, um, related to affirmatively furthering hair, uh, fair housing. And as everyone has mentioned, this is not the last, um, step. We'll continue to take additional comments and then hear from the experts at HCD and, um, uh, develop, uh, recommended revisions to the housing element for your consideration. Um, with, there were a number of other, um, comments, um, in the, uh, letter from, uh, Legal Services and, um, the Shannon mentioned that, you know, because of the hour and, um, time limitations that, uh, she didn't get it fully into all those comments, but I just, I want to note here that we will, uh, consider the, you know, all of those comments. There were a couple of the, other topics, for example, um, housing sites from previous housing elements and, um, other, um, comments that are related to the, uh, sites inventory. So I just want to note here for the record that we're going to remain engaged on the thoughts that Shannon brought up tonight, but also those in the full comment letter. And hopefully that's a satisfactory to council and the mayor. I'll hang on here in case there are any other, um, questions for me.
If, if I may, um, Madam Mayor, thanks to start of this question and answer, but it, it really, uh, the part, the two things I'm taking away from the comments is a thank you for underscoring that the importance of the document, right? It's an exercise that's doing two, that the second thing is it's articulating or meeting state requirements, right? So this is something we have to do. Um, and, um, so, but again, it's just, it's just further sort of the importance of the document and, and how we move forward. And I think knowing the process, you're, you'll get feedback from, um, uh, the state, you know, again, you'll listen to stakeholders as we go forward. Um, and, and at least that's what I'm hearing, right? This is, this is part of the process.
Yes, that's correct.
The only other thing, I'll, I'll, thank you. I don't, I don't, unless anybody else has questions for, um, um, I just wanted to bring up just a couple of the points because you're incorporating, which are fully support and are now also part of state requirements around, um, addressing, uh, climate, um, and climate goals and requirements that the state now has. And I know, um, as a city, we adopted some of the goals from, um, at least the high level goals out of the Mayor's Commission on Climate Change. We took part in the last few years with the City of Sacramento. Um, so again, I, I, I appreciate sort of the, the, the delve into that as well. Um, because that is an important part of our, oh, kind of what I feel has been our overarching strategy, um, as we try to, uh, address, um, uh, climate change in ways we can, um, in, in certain ways, including I, I, I know the issue of electrification came up by somebody earlier. Um, and, uh, but that is part of the, that Mayor's Commission, um, on climate change, at least on, in the urban areas, uh, which would be mainly sort of the Bridge District, Washington on any new development. I think that's one of the overarching goals. Um, so again, um, but I appreciate you, um, uh, highlighting that in your staff report as the part you had to incorporate because there are state requirements and there probably will be more from the, uh, from the state as we move forward. But this, again, just thank you. This is good work. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilmember Ledesma. Any other questions? Councilmember Roscoe?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I, you know, I have really appreciate the feedback and public comment. Um, and I, you know, uh, I, I, I've been really proud of our city. We have been very forward thinking when it's come to affordable housing and, you know, it, it doesn't always, uh, go noticed. Um, we don't have any, say identifiable projects that, uh, you know, some people might necessarily like point to and say, oh, you know, that's a, that's a projects or something to that effect, right? We, we've been very smart about, um, doing beautiful developments that are affordable housing in the city and some of which, uh, have been used, you know, we use the housing trust fund to do. And I agree. I mean, when I first came on scene here, I had really big questions about housing trust fund and I, you know, wanted to educate myself about it because it just, well, wait a sec, you know, you don't want to circumvent a process that would offer opportunity for folks to, um, you know, uh, be housed in places that are beautiful and, um, you know, exclude, right? And, and, and to say, oh, we'll put it in a pot or something else. But what I've seen West City of West Sacramento do with that is extraordinary. And if you go down Tower, uh, uh, Charbridge Gateway and you see Gateway Place, um, our first one, uh, you know, went up and now we're using the housing trust fund to build number two. And you think about the Mercy Project, the permanent supportive housing project that we have going on, uh, under construction now, that's going to provide opportunities for so many folks, including many who I assume may, you know, come from the project Home Key Project as they transition out. And you think about Parkside, which is a beautiful, uh, you know, unit, a beautiful development. In fact, I even wanted to get my mother into that development, um, before she eventually moved into a senior mobile home park. But, you know, we have, um, you know, from, um, Parkside to Rivermark and Washington Courtyard and West Gateway Place and, uh, these, these places where we used the money to fund smart development. And I want to see more of that. I want, because I mean, I think City of West Sacramento has actually done something. We didn't sat, we didn't sit on it. We actually went forth and did something with it. So, um, I think, you know, in this case, I think that we have, um, we've done something right. Um, with that, I, I don't want to, um, you know, take for granted the, the, uh, the comments that have been shared. Um, they're very insightful and I, I am relying on, you know, our staff to address those and, and provide the, the council with, um, you know, the information that we need in order to make a more informed decisions and to ensure that, uh, our, our, um, housing element i- is fair and is reflective of, of the direction that we want our city to go in in the next eight years. Um, so with that, I'll conclude my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Roscoe. Um, thank you, um, uh, Mr. Ortega for all of the work you put into this, um, and, and preparing this comprehensive report, um, that you've presented to us tonight and, um, the condensed presentation, um, you did a great job, by the way. Uh, but it is a very important topic for, for us on council. Um, we, we, we get another shot at taking an opportunity to, um, level the playing field for those that are struggling, you know, sometimes using 50% of their salaries to have a roof over their head. Um, today, now more than ever, uh, solutions are, are important because it'll be an economic recovery in order for us to, you know, get out of the pandemic. This is not going to be, uh, over overnight and people who have lost their jobs. And, um, you know, we're hearing about, um, the eviction moratorium. Um, so that, that just puts a Band-Aid because once that Band-Aid's ripped off, people are not going to be able to pay their rent. And we're going to need to have, we're going to have a huge flow of, um, you know, people who are going to be evicted and, um, struggling. So our numbers here will, will, will definitely grow significantly. And so I'm, I, I know we don't have solutions overnight, um, but I would like us to consider using the housing trust fund, to consider solutions, um, or other resources, um, to help, you know, um, in eviction prevention. And, um, I know, I know that, you know, in the development of this report, the coronavirus relief funding, and we didn't have the Biden administration to explore alternatives. I know Councilmember Roscoe is going to have the, um, uh, you know, the honored task of, um, leading, leading our council in these solutions, um, in her assignments. And, um, so the, uh, homeless, addressing homelessness, addressing housing through the Housing Authority, uh, moving aggressively to help our constituents, you know, uh, maintain the housing that they have, um, is incredibly important. Um, so, you know, with that, I know we need to, we haven't, we have, you know, a time set period to get this before HCD because, you know, not only our city, but hundreds of other cities are going to be submitting their, their, um, housing element to be reviewed, approved and sent back and us to refine it. Um, but, uh, you know, I'd, I'd like to, you know, address what, what I did here from, um, uh, Mr. Garrett and, um, the Legal Services of Northern California. Mr. Garrett, thank you so much. I don't know if you're still on, but thank you so much for, um, taking the time, um, because of your expertise. I, I really greatly appreciate you, um, stepping in and waiting around with us till this time of the, of the night. Um, because we know that there are people who are very stressed out about being able to have a roof over their head and, and how are they going to feed their children? And, um, how are they going to get out of a car or, or out of a, out of, you know, out of a, you know, you know, mobile, you know, van or something? So, you know, we still have a housing crisis here and, um, it's been, that's why we have a significant amount of legislation making us take a closer look at what is going on with our housing and in, and having affordable housing, housing. The crisis is exponentially, you know, significant, not only here in West Sacramento, even though we, we have made some effort. I'm looking at a, um, vacancy rate of less than 3%. And so that for me said, set, you know, sets red flags that we have our work cut out for us. We need to increase that vacancy rate so people can afford housing. Um, as Mr. Garrett pointed out, um, the very low income, you know, as far as housing, um, available for them. I, I, I'm really concerned that we don't have the supply today for that. And, and we, and if we don't have it today, it is only going to get impacted and get worse, um, three to five years from now. So to the extent that we need to, instead of, um, looking at, um, building more housing, you know, for inclusionary housing, um, to build new housing, because that takes much longer, what could we do for eviction prevention? Um, maybe using, um, our housing trust fund or any other resources for that, um, refurbishing our old motels like we did with the roadway in, um, seeing how we can have public-private partnerships. Um, Councilmember Roscoe will, will be able to present that in the Housing Authority, you know, working with our county partners to establish that here in West Sacramento. Rental assistance, um, seeking, you know, ways to provide rental assistance. Uh, one of the other areas of concern that I've heard and, and has been identified is affordable housing for seniors. You know, we have widows and we will now have more widows as a result of COVID-19. And, um, this, this pandemic just didn't hit them, you know, because of the illness, but also because I've noticed, um, people didn't have access to healthcare. And, um, as a result of that, they, they did not do well and, and even including my father passed away, um, when he could have had a, a minor medical intervention, um, but he just got worse and, and in two weeks just passed away. We don't even really understand why. So there's just a number of people who are elderly and now are widowed. And I'd like to make sure that we, um, you know, aggressively look at senior housing because in reading the, the report, we have a growing number of seniors with not, you know, and, and having a living situation. So they have a community living situation accessible to transportation, accessible to a senior, um, community center. Um, unfortunately we have like a VIA that helps them get around, get groceries, but just so that they can continue to live independently. Um, otherwise we'll, we'll be putting more pressure on our nursing homes, um, in-home supportive services, um, because, you know, they're going to be stretched too thin to survive on their own and it's not healthy for them. Um, also looking at, um, what, what Councilmember, uh, Ledesma said about, um, our climate change, you know, I, I'd like to, you know, work with you, Councilmember Ledesma, to form a task force because I think, um, we need to take a look at that in our housing inventory and electrification, um, you know, of our homes presently and making sure that, um, we accomplish the goals that has been set. And, and we do so quickly because it's, um, imperative that we manage, you know, uh, the, you know, the situation that is affecting our climate. We can see it in the, in the significant number of fires around us. Um, we're suffering with smelling the smoke. It's, it's, uh, a dire situation and, and harming our health today. So, you know, whatever we can do to, you know, help, you know, get to the zero net energy goals, you know, in, in our current housing supply and in our future housing supply. Uh, I'm very supportive of that. And I thank you for your work on the Mayor's Climate Change, you know, Commission. Um, and, uh, you know, would like to work with you on that, um, you know, progress. Um, you know, taking a look at what we can do with our, um, current housing supply. You know, taking a look at what we can do with our current housing supply, I think there was a CalWorks program that refurbished an apartment building and opened up opportunities for CalWorks families and looking at those opportunities with, with funding sources. How can we work at the federal level to create opportunities like that so that we can refurbish current housing is much faster than waiting for a home to be built, you know, four or five years from now? So I'd like to take a look at what our current housing supply is right now. And also, you know, the, the significant concern that was raised by Shannon from Legal Services of Northern California and making sure that we have equity around the city in, you know, the fair housing by identifying the vacant parcels within the high areas, areas of high opportunity. You know, there was a, one applicant who created an idea of tiny homes and tiny homes is a solution. And I, I heard her, you know, speak passionately about how her tiny home is, is good for her because, you know, she lives at a much lower daily cost, you know, because she can afford it. And so it's a lifestyle choice, you know, for her and it seems to work well. And I know, I know, you know, your, the administration's working, you know, well with her. She's very excited. So, and taking a look at how we can blend those two options and also accessory dwelling units, because we have some good sized, you know, vacant land or, you know, areas of land that, you know, that have house and then, you know, have, you know, we can build some granny units, maybe incentivize, using our resources to incentivize that, because I think that could be built a lot faster. But also taking a look at what we can do to, you know, just increase our supply faster and instead of waiting for our new housing development to come around and provide that kind of support. So just what, whatever we can do, whatever, you know, we can accomplish through either changing state laws or drawing down federal or state funding, you know, there is AB 71, which I'm grateful that we took a position on. And there's going to be a hearing tomorrow on, on addressing homelessness with the state, you know, the statewide status of that is. And reached out to our city manager to see how we can testify at that hearing tomorrow if there's an opportunity to express an interest on what we can do to address our housing supply and homelessness here in West Sacramento. Because I think that's where an opportunity is growing for us to be able to draw down the resources and, you know, increase our supply quickly. And so with that, I do get that we need to move this forward and, you know, it's not an urgency, but I think we just should, should move it forward. But I'd like to keep it open to consider the amendments, including the Mills-Garrett recommendation for if we, if we have as an alternative to inclusionary housing, you know, have a project labor agreement. I think that is beneficial. One of the things that, you know, we, we can increase all this housing, but what we need to make sure is that people have jobs and people can afford to stay in their jobs. So, you know, through programs like that, they can, they can receive an apprenticeship program. It's a local hire requirement. And then they can get a pension and, you know, help feed their family. They, they will get a well-paid job and it'll be trained to, you know, to have a skill for life. So, you know, just with opportunities like that or, you know, any other economic development ideas that my fellow council members have where we can work with outside resources so that we can increase jobs so that people can stay in their homes. So, you know, with that, I'm willing to accept a motion.
I will do that. There's a quick comment.
Yes.
On many things, just one through in terms of how this we should address. Just, just the document does articulate our, our housing needs and, and we have a big number to hit, right? Like number of houses we need to hit. It's also a very compelling case as in places like Seco to get the transit funding we need to support the housing. So again, just another example of how important this document is. So, or the numbers behind it more importantly, that how we, how we plan it. But I will, with that, I will make the motion to, to approve the draft housing element for submitted to HCD.
No second.
Thank you, Councilmember Ledesma moved. Councilmember Alcala, please call a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Ledesma?
Aye.
Councilmember Orozco?
Aye.
Councilmember Alcala?
Aye.
And Mayor Guerrero?
Aye. Thank you. And with that, Elijah, we look forward to seeing you back and greatly appreciate, you know, all the work you put into this. Next item is our council calendar. Do we have any items for our council? And actually I have a question about our council calendar. Do we have a pit count coming up or is it passed?
Madam Mayor, actually if I could point out, we did have one other item on the agenda before we get there, but we, we can.
Oh, we do.
Try to get that answered while in the meantime.
Okay. Okay, good. All right. Now the next item is, what is item 26 is probably 27, maybe that's what happened here, is consideration of resolution 21-5 for exemption of the 180-day wait period for hiring a retiree as a temporary extra help employee, government section code 7522.56 and 21224. And is it Assistant City Manager Berlin is going to be, or let me see who's going to be presenting on this 26? Going to be Caitlin?
Caitlin Montez, yes.
Hi, good evening, Mayor and members of the council. Human Resources is requesting council's approval and adoption of resolution 21-5, which is a requirement of CalPERS to grant an exemption to the 180-day waiting period for hiring a recent retiree as a temporary extra help employee.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Bringing it over.
I make a motion to approve.
Oh, I'm sorry. What, what? So I'll bring it back to council for a question, I mean, comments or questions? Councilmember Alcala?
I'm sorry, I was going to make a motion to approve.
Okay.
The recommendation.
I, I know it's late. It's up off this Zoom meeting. I'll, I'll get to the motion, I'll put the table to motion till after, you know, go through public comment and all the steps. Are there any other questions or comments, questions or comments? I'll open it up for public comment, any, any, any written or request to speak on this item? Madam Clerk?
We received a written public comment and it's posted on the website. There are no scans to make a public comment at this time.
Okay, thank you. We'll bring it back, close the public comment, bring it back to council. Are there any other questions or comments from council members? Okay, and Councilmember Alcala has a motion. I'll take a second.
Okay.
Okay, Councilmember Orozco, second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Alcala?
Aye.
Councilmember Ledesma?
Aye.
Councilmember Orozco?
Aye.
And Mayor Guerrero?
Aye. Thank you. Now we can move to the council calendar. Sorry. Sorry.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. I don't have any, any comments on the, on the calendar tonight. You did ask about the, the pit count and I don't have an answer for you on that, but I do wonder if there may be some discussion about whether or not that would happen due to the COVID pandemic and whether or not they would be going out and doing the count. But we can find out more information and get that to you.
Thank you. Chief Strange, did you have a comment?
Just on that, that we would check and get back to you guys all within the next week. Just have to ascertain from the county Health and Human Services folks.
Thank you. I, there was a training that I missed and if there's a way to, to do something so that I can get a training, that would be great. I, I think it was for a particular forum and that was last week on Thursday. So if there's a way to, to do that and then continue to participate, I'd be interested. Any, and the council calendar, additional report from Assistant City Manager?
No report for me. Anyone has any questions, can take questions, otherwise that's it for me.
Okay, thank you. No questions, okay? And City Manager report?
Thank you. Tried to text Mark Sawyer with, as long with, with Chief Strange and hopefully Mark went to bed. But we'll get, we'll get that information to the council when the next pit count's coming up. I know, we know it's coming soon. Just two quick updates, both public safety related. One is because we didn't, because of COVID and pandemic, we didn't get to have a ceremony for this, but just today, the new ladder truck was placed into service. So the council, you may recall, in the last budget cycle approved the funding for that. That's, that's the big truck. So this doesn't happen very often. You'll, you'll be seeing it around town. It operates out of Station 45. So you can't miss it, but we're happy to report that. And then second, this is more for the public, I reported to the council also, but the police department, the last couple of weeks and especially in the last few days, has been very closely coordinating with our friends across the river and others in the region. I just want to really reassure you that the staff work has been outstanding on that front, making sure that the, the risk to the city, there haven't been, but, but if there were, they were, they would have been very well addressed and our assistance has been going across the river. So I want to thank both Chief Strange, but also Lieutenant Winger, Jason Winger, and I'm sure there's many others involved. In fact, we have one officer who's been involved directly in the coordination with National Guard and his other duties. So I just want to thank them for that. So that, that's all tonight. I just want to give you those couple of updates.
Thank you, Aaron. I think you had an update regarding the strategic planning retreat. Do you recall that one?
Yeah, and I think that was, we're working on, on dates where our, our staff executive retreat, which is happening now over a three-day period over Zoom, will be next week. That's, we usually have that more in December and in person, since we couldn't do either one of those, just timing wise, we're, we're going to get that part done. We will then hope to schedule the council retreat. We were hoping that the vaccination pace would be at a point where we'd be able to meet in person. There's still hope that we'll be able to get there, but it definitely won't be in the normal timeframe, which is towards the beginning of February. More likely it'll be in March to give us time to get through our process and get ready for that. But, but definitely in plenty of time ahead of the next two-year budget, which will be taken up in, in May and June. So those, those two processes are important to kind of keep in, in mind together. So we'll do our best to get it scheduled and hopefully, like I said, in person, but stay tuned. So, thanks.
Thank you. And just to take into consideration for that retreat, there was a recommendation, and I know, I know, please, council members, you know, we, we've, we've started off a little rocky and I'd like to see what we can do to work together, you know, to, you know, work collaboratively together. And there was a book recommended for us to read and, you know, see how we can go through a process called Leadership and Self Deception Getting Out of the Box. It's from the Arvinger Institute, authors of The Anatomy of Peace. And it's a book that was read and used for exercises to help build relationships for like employee, employment situations or boards and commissions. And in our case, you know, it would be city council. So just to find ways to be able to work more collaboratively and, and move forward in a way that we would be stronger together. And so if there's any other recommendations, ideas, welcome them so that we can have a successful strategic planning retreat when it comes. And hopefully we'll have a vaccine, keeping my fingers crossed, and so we can be able to meet together in person and get that process moving forward. Is there a city attorney report?
I have nothing to report tonight.
Thank you. And then is there future agenda item request by council? None? Okay, and I like, I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
Oh, excuse me, Mayor Guerrero, I, I just wanted to adjourn in memory of a West Sacramento resident, Zuleca Santiago Torres, who passed away two weeks ago. She'd been a 14-year resident.
Thank you, Councilmember Alcala, for bringing her to, to our attention and.
I'll second that, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Orozco. And just also want to, you know, express my gratitude to, you know, members of our community who came out tonight to speak live, you know, Jenny Kingsley-Melton, who is a nurse, I know, is, you know, our nurses, our frontline workers are going through a lot and seeing a lot more than, I don't think, I don't know how, you know, I just worry about the stress of all of our frontline workers who are going through a lot of stress and, and grateful and appreciative for what they've accomplished and helped us, you know, to take care of us. And, you know, just not to take away from the adjourned memory, but I just want to thank, you know, everybody for their involvement tonight. And with that, I'll, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
And give me here, Councilmember Alcala?
Aye.
Councilmember Ledesma?
Aye.
Councilmember Orozco?
Aye.
And Mayor Guerrero?
Aye. With that, tonight, everybody have a good evening.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night.